All right, we all set? All right, thanks. Good evening and welcome to the August 16th regular meeting of the Town Council. If you wouldn't mind, please rise and join us in the Pledge of the Flag. And we'd like Boy Scout, I've lost him. Braden, yes, if you, Bringham Parker, please, lead us in.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. All right. If everybody wouldn't mind, what I'd like to do is start the meeting off first with recognizing Nellie Granger this evening. For me, this is one of the most exciting things I've done. I had the opportunity once before with Madeline Bennett, who came before us, and it was just a fun evening. So, just real quick, I want to... First, I want to tell you a little bit about the Boston Post cane real quick. It was in August 2nd, 1909, that Mr. Edwin Grazier, publisher of the Boston Post newspaper, he forwarded to the Board of Selectmen 700 towns canes with gold-headed ebony cane with the request that it be presented with compliments of the Boston Post to the oldest citizen in the town, and to be used by them as long as they lived here. And so, this evening, we have Nellie, who I received a little bit, a few things about Nellie. And I'll read this first, and then I'll come over and make this presentation. "Nellie was born in Nashua, New Hampshire on January 19th, 1921. Growing up, she had two historic natural disasters affect her childhood. Her family lost their home in the great fire of 1930 in Nashua on Crown Hill. Consequently, they moved to Haverhill, Mass., where the historic flooding of the Merrimack River in 1936 forced her family to return to Nashua. Nellie graduated from Nashua High School in 1939. During World War II, she worked in Nashua alongside other women processing radar cores used in the war. It was during this time that she was struck by lightning standing near a window while at work, but she fully recovered. Nellie married Guy Granger in 1946 and moved to Merrimack in 1951 with her husband, where they raised six children. Nellie has 13 grandchildren and eight great-grandchildren. Sixty-seven years later, she's living on the same property in Merrimack. However, their home was lost in a fire in 2000, and they had to rebuild. Nellie is a member of St. John Newman Church and the VFW Auxiliary Post 8641. And she says that the secret to a long life is just to keep busy." And that she's done, so...
Now, I'm going to get up because I'm going to be taking pictures while you do that. I'm going to take picture of them and their family, okay?
Absolutely. Nellie.
Yes.
This, they used to give out the Boston Post cane, but it's on a display at the Town Hall right now.
Yeah.
Locked under a locking key.
Yes.
But this is a pen that we give you, this is the Boston Post cane right here.
Very nice.
And so, and then the proclamation reads, it's the Boston Post cane. This is to certify that Nellie Granger is being recognized as the oldest living resident in Merrimack, and as such, is appointed the holder of the Boston Post cane. As a token of this recognition, a replica of the cane and a lapel pin is presented to the recipient. Presented on behalf of the Merrimack Town Council and the Town Manager the 16th day of August 2018. We're thrilled to have you here.
Thank you very much.
So, you can have that.
Oh, it's beautiful.
Hold it next to, and we can just get the, turn her a little better, let family get behind.
God bless you. You got to get that great grandbaby in there. How's that? Some people are trying to hide. What's the boy's name? Oliver. Hide.
Scaring me.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Alrighty. Okay, first on the agenda is announcements. Our next regular meetings are scheduled for September 13th at 7:00 p.m., September 27th at 7:00 p.m., October 11th at 7:00 p.m., and Thursday, October 25th at 7:00 p.m., all held here in the Matthew Thornton Room. Eileen, do you have any announcements?
The Parks and Recreation Department is pleased to welcome Kirsten Merlino as the new Recreation Program Coordinator. The new Parks and Recreation Fall Activities brochure is now available. Hard copies are available at Town Hall and in the library, and an electronic version is available on the Parks and Recreation website at www.merrimackparksandrec.org. This is all about the Parks and Recreation Department. The Parks and Recreation Department invites Merrimack families to join us for our next free movie in the Park Night, which will take place on Friday, August 24th, at Abbey Griffin Park. The movie will be Boss Baby. People must like that, right? Which will begin at 7:30. We just received, I just received an email today from the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services, who are actively organizing a health and PFAS health fair community event that they are aiming to be held early in the fall. This event will be a station-style meeting consisting of different tables, hosted by different groups such as Health and Environmental and EPA. And attendees impacted from southern New Hampshire can have one-on-one conversations about their questions and concerns. And the date and time of this event and location have not been determined yet, but the public will be notified well in advance of that occurring. Thank you.
Is there a possibility, if not now, but as soon as a decision is made by the council in terms of times, to be able to have this information on the website?
Well, actually, I was, I received this and was kind of surprised in the format in which I received it because I had never met the woman who sent it to me. And as you know, we have a relationship with, we've had a long-term relationship with Department of Health and Human Services through this process. So, I called Jake Leon, who's their Public Relations Director of Department of Health and Human Services. And he said this was meant to be just sent to the Town Managers to contribute to the planning of this. So, it wasn't necessarily, it's not official. It's just an outline for discussion on how things may happen. And I said to him, "Well, I guess it might be a generational thing, but I think it's nice when somebody picks the phone and calls you up and says, 'Can I come over and talk to you?'" And then does like a kind of thing. But emailing seems to be the way. But I, as I pointed out to him, that any document that comes to my office is public information, and as soon as I get it, I give it to the council, so...
Do you need feedback from us?
I guess I would prefer, in whatever way that you would like.
Okay.
Yeah. Because I think it's in the, it's in the very early stages of trying to put something together and gathering, you know, they're looking for input from, you know, what kind of questions do you get here at Town Hall? What do they get in Litchfield? And those kinds of things concerning health.
Okay. Well, they are asking for a meeting space in the email. So, I think, I certainly would like to volunteer the community to serve as a focal point for hosting the health fair. I think, considering what this community has been through over the last couple of years, I think it only would only amplify the leadership that this community has shown in this particular issue to be as a perfect venue to hosting such an event. So, that would be my recommendation to you, Eileen, is that. We invite them to host the fair here in Nashua.
I know it is hot.
It's hot in here.
And I think Barbara had mentioned too, in terms of timeline, I think right after school has started, which isn't that far away, would be a great time because just the availability, vacations will be over, kids will be in school, parents will probably have a little bit more time, so...
Okay, yeah.
And I would be happy to volunteer.
I'll jump right in there and volunteer to get our community to be the host.
Okay.
Listen, this is early fall.
Yeah, early fall. Great.
Yeah, I got a couple of things. The New Hampshire Drinking Water and Groundwater Advisory Commission met yesterday. We went through the recommendations of the four subgroups that were reviewing the pre-applications that were seeking either grants or loans out of the trust fund for specific projects that were going through. They were presented to my commission for, through different municipalities throughout the state of New Hampshire. Police announced that conditionally, one of the two grants was approved for the MVD. It will be brought to a final vote on August 30th. That was, does not involve the recharge, but involves improving the contamination of wells four and five. So, they've been conditionally moved on to the final step. That vote's going to be on August 30th, where it'll be, we just got, just got an email today. I have not had a chance to look at, where all the recommendations are put forth onto paper and for us, for the commission to vet a final time before making final approval. So, very, very happy that the MVD is going to be potentially, knock on wood, potentially receiving some funding for wells four and five. So, I thought that was, that was very good news. So, I think my hat is off to the MVD for applying for the grant. And I want to thank Representative Chris Christensen, who was on that committee, who was part of the process to shepherd that particular grant application through. The other two things that I wanted to bring for the council's consideration is, as it relates to one of the groundwater wells adjacent to Sangobane, as we have learned that it's testing at 19,000 parts per trillion. And I'm just wondering whether or not it would be appropriate at this particular time to reach out to DES to have them do another, another meeting, another community meeting to provide us with some, with some updates that have occurred up in Concord, not just as it relates to the groundwater, but also some of the legislation that has been passed, one of which, the Year of Missions Bill that we took a position on, which was passed through the House and passed through the Senate, signed by Governor Sununu. I had a brief conversation with Assistant Commissioner Freize yesterday, and he's thrilled that DES now has this particular tool at their fingertips. So, now they're able to go in and actually look, not just at Sangobane, but, you know, other factories that have smokestacks. They now have some, God bless you, they now have some tangible alarm, beginning to create some tangible rules from which to create an ability to go and review and inspect those particular sites. So, I'd like to see if it's the council's will-to-end invitation to DES to make a community presentation, but also see if they're willing to have a couple more monthly office meetings here in town, not just for people that have been very active in the community. Certainly, you know, if they want to attend those office hours, they certainly can. But, you know, we are a growing community, we have some new people in town. It's been brought to my attention that there's been an increase through, at DES, of some people that are moving to Merrimack, that are coming to Merrimack, that don't understand some of the issues that are occurring as it relates to PFAS, as it relates to drinking water. So, I'm wondering whether it's permissible for the council to extend an invitation to DES to have maybe for the months of October and November, some office hours, like from 4:00 to 6:00, 5:00 to something, something that's after work hours, where they'd be able to come and sit down and talk to, you know, talk to people. Hopefully, hopefully generates some new people, some new interest coming to town to learn a little bit more about what's been going on in Merrimack as it relates to PFAS. So, I open that up to my colleagues for their consideration.
Wouldn't matter to me.
Yeah, it would be fact, I don't think it would be a bad idea at all.
My question is, they did a series of those sessions at Town Hall, and I'm not quite sure how many people attended. Was it, was it well-attended, the sessions, or would a larger format-type meeting be more effective? That's...
They weren't well-attended.
They had less than, at the five sessions, they attended three, and I think they had, I think it was like five, three, and two. I know Council Harrington, was that one of the sessions where there were like maybe two or three people that attended? But also, keep in mind that those sessions occurred during, during normal business hours. And I think, you know, we are, we are a working community. We're a bedroom community, where people commute, you know, X amount of minutes, either north or south out of Merrimack to go to work. I think having the potential of asking them to see if they're willing to come in during an evening for once or twice a month, or once a month for the next, you know, for a couple of months, to see if we can generate some people to come after work and see if there's any interest there. To me, it's a no-harm, no-foul kind of situation. I think with a lot of people that may not feel comfortable talking in a facility such as this amongst a lot of people, again, to have that level of, it's probably the wrong word to use, but the level of intimacy, that one-to-one contact with, for that individual to have with the representative from DES might prove to be fruitful and invaluable.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Boyd. I think it's probably a good idea. It may be a little bit of overlap with the, what we had just talked about as far as having them come in and do a health fair.
That's Health and Human Services, this is Department of Environmental Services.
Well, they were also going to have some specialists coming in from university to talk about it as well. So, there may be some overlap, and that's not a bad thing. But what I really want to say from them is, when they come, is what's the work plan? You know, when are we, we know we've got a well on Flatley Land that's 19,000 PTT. When are they going to do something about it? What's the game plan? What are the dates around that plan? I'm sorry, is my project management popping through?
It's okay.
But, you know, and he had, there was also some talk about a system that they were testing for stack scrubbers. You know, how did those tests come out? What's the game plan, if it was successful, for actually putting those on the Sangobane?
Well, that would be the whole point of having that community meeting, is to provide us with that particular update, information such as that, you know?
Yeah, so that's what I would be looking for for them, some contract things going on.
And I think this concern with, as it relates to the well, you know, what, what questions are they asking Sangobane? You know, is it residual? Is it stuff that was buried? It was, you know, is it, is it stuff that's being brought, brought from the inside, brought outside, being...
Right.
You know, those questions, that's, those are questions that DES would probably have to ask. But I think as a community, I think we should be privy to that kind of information. So, this would provide a unique opportunity to provide those particular updates to the community at large.
Yeah, give them expectations.
Councilor Boyd.
So, I think whatever we do, I think MVD needs to be involved.
I agree.
And I think they need to spearhead it as well, because we've got some great commissioners that are really communicating well with us now. And I think we need to just make sure that they are there before we talk about it, because they're the experts, we're just the informational part of it.
All right. So, do we, when I have... Do we need to make a motion?
If we do one, I'd rather, I'd rather see one to begin with, see what the turnout is. Because I think, I mean, that first meeting we had, nobody knew what was going on, and that drug out quite a few, a few hundred people. I can't remember the number now, but it was a good turnout. And so, so, for me, it doesn't, I think an invite would be very appropriate, and timing, I leave it up to the...
I, the motion would include, you know, giving latitude to Eileen and Paul to work with DES to come up with, you know, a date, location, venue, that that would be suitable for. So, that would be my motion, that Town Council ask either Eileen or Paul to reach out to DES to provide an update to the town of Merrimack and other impacted communities by PFAS regarding ongoing examinations, investigations, inquiries into the PFAS situation as it exists in and around and in the circumference of Sangobane.
Are you talking a presentation or an office hour?
Presentation, not the office hours. That doesn't seem to be generating, something totally different. Okay. I'm sorry?
At a council meeting?
At a council meeting?
No.
No.
I don't think so, not what he's looking for. I, I thought you were interested in the office hour type thing to make it personal again, so people wouldn't feel uncomfortable in the big room.
I want both, I mean, I'm greedy, I'll admit it, I want both. But if it's not the will of the council, I'm trying to, I'm trying to read the tea leaves right now as to what seems to be palatable for the council. So, I thought a community-wide meeting made more sense than, than having the individual office hours.
I, I guess I, I prefer, I think a full-blown meeting. And, you know, maybe we talk further with the Health and Human Services and include them in it, in some of the topics they want to talk about. Because I don't know if a health fair is, is the most effective way to communicate the issues. You know, I want to hear what they have to say on the overall issue. And Barbara made some great points. You know, I want to hear from DES about if they're going to take any action on these wells. So, that's where I stand on it. I think one, one overall meeting would be helpful to me.
Okay.
So, I guess I'm agreeing with you. I think, Bill, your idea is good, that having them come in and make a presentation of some sort is, would be a great thing to ask them to do. It's about time, because of these issues that Peter's alluded to, Barbara, you, and whatnot. So, I agree with that. I also believe that Mr. Freize had offered to come down and do office hours whenever anybody wanted. And so, asking him to, to consider setting up something with maybe a late evening, late afternoon or evening office hours is not a bad thing either. And that gives both venues an opportunity to deal with. If people have questions that they don't feel comfortable in a public meeting asking, they can, they could come in and talk to him if he's around and available. But I also believe the presentation would be a great idea, if we could get it done. And I kind of agree with what Peter's saying. The health fair is, is an interesting thing to do. It would give people an opportunity to get into information, but it won't get the information out to the public. It'll get it to those people that come up and ask at the table. And so, I think this presentation is a better venue to go forward with the questions that have been coming up recently about the whole thing.
Eileen.
I will certainly talk to them. I, the whole health fair concept was, as I said, a surprise to me that they were considering something like that. But it didn't sound to me like they were asking if we wanted one. They were asking if we had any input, more than whether we wanted one. So, I'm not sure that they are necessarily prepared to give an update that would be, would make me happy. You know, as Peter and Barbara have both alluded to, you know, the wells, the very high level of wells, I've asked for an email response instead of a phone call, which was last Friday, and I still haven't gotten it. So, I just, I need to find out what it is that they are, if they're at a point where they can actually give information that's, that would be new to you.
Nancy.
We're talking about three different things now. I think the office hours is a great idea, there's no, nothing to lose. The health fair, I think Department of Health and Human Services is responding to a lot of healthcare questions.
Correct.
So, I think that's legitimate, and we should be working on that. So, but that won't be addressed, will not address the questions about the well.
The remediation piece.
That whole well thing. And I think as a council, we have every right to formally request a meeting from them to report to us what their intention is in terms of examination and remediation. They may choose to do nothing, but we can choose to ask the question.
Yep.
I think that's what we need to do.
Very good, I like it.
That's why she should, she loves it. I'm sorry, Barbara?
So, do we need a motion further, or is just a agreement?
There's already a motion and a second, that's already on the table.
For three things.
Well, no, just for, I originally just wanted, but I'll amend it to do all three, because I agree with all three, I do.
Why don't we just encapsulate it all together?
encapsulate it all together, I have no problems with that. So, that is the motion? That is the motion, all three.
So, you, the council, want to have the state DES to come in and talk to you about what their plans are and timeline for remediation of the wells and contaminated, particularly, any particular contaminated groundwater?
And what they're going to do about the air stacks, now that they have the ability?
What are they going to do about the air stacks?
What are they going to do?
And so, my question is, is that a public forum, the best way? No, 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 no. I mean, a separate meeting night where they come and make a presentation in the gymnasium? Or is that a council meeting type of thing?
Jay Muse, like they've always done in the last two meetings, a community forum at Jay Muse, a full-blown PowerPoint presentation with the microphone setup, with Nick and his crew videotaping it live, being able to run it on Community Access TV.
Okay, very good, thank you.
And include the Health and Human Services piece as well. I think that, you know, we're coming up on the two-year anniversary in October. Maybe, that might be the great time to conduct this meeting and...
It might be, be able to be done both at the same time.
All right. So, is, any further discussion on Bill's motion? Who's second? Barbara.
Me.
Okay. Motion by Bill Boyd, seconded by Barbara. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Seven zero zero. Thank you, Bill. Has, any further updates? Peter? Nothing? The ad hoc committee is going to be meeting within the next couple weeks. Date to be determined. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Highway Garage Projects Update, I was given this from Kyle. Despite the rainy weather of late, construction of the new highway facility continues to progress well. The roof of the maintenance bay portion of the building is well underway, and installation of the siding has begun. Underground utilities have been installed in the administrative portion of the building, and we expect that the slab, floor slab for that part will be placed next week. Once the slab is placed, the contractor will begin placing the rough framing for the administration, administration portion of the building. He also wanted you to know that there are updated progress photos and drone flyover videos that can be found on the Public Works Facebook page. Thank you, Kyle. Peter?
I don't know if I'm out of order here, but we've got several members of the community here for recognition issues.
Yes.
And I'm wondering if we could move to that, and then go to public comments afterwards, because it's quite a large group here.
And that will, I think that's a good idea, and without objection, that's what we'll do. What I would like to do, I think I just saw Tony, he is right here. So I'm going to start with Tony, who was in that list, and then we'll get to the employee recognitions, if everybody wouldn't mind. Okay, thank you. All righty. Tony, if you'll join us.
Just a couple, Tony's been very active in the community over the years, and I have a short list here of some of those things. Tony is, was on the zoning board of adjustment from 2009 to 2018, was on the Board of Selectmen from 97 to 2000. He was on the sewer master plan study committee as a selectman's representative to that group, the solid waste ad hoc committee, he was part of the charter commission, he was on the ethics committee from 2005 to 2008, which I think was the beginning of that committee.
Yes.
He was on the table, Cable TV Advisory Committee, which maybe you might do that again, I don't know, and as well the Conservation Commission.
Yes.
And this evening, we have Tony here, to recognize him for his most recent stint with the zoning board, he's decided to take a little break, and the recognition is presented to Anthony Pellegrino, in recognition of your service as a member of the Zoning Board of Adjustment, in recognition of your dedication and commitment to the public service during your appointment as a member of the ZBA. Your service and devotion to the Zoning Board of Adjustment has had a valuable effect upon the community, and we wish to extend to you our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance of duty dated from June 29th to June 18th, on behalf of the council.
I'm a very person of few words, as everybody knows. I want to thank the town of Merrimack and the people of Merrimack to do this honor to me, and I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just also want to mention, Tony, back when Merrimack PD was very small, and they didn't have a full, a large full-time police department, Tony was one of the original members of our special officers. He served there several years, and one of, was one of the leaders of the group, so I think he should be recognized, that, he did this for several years.
Thank you very much.
Peter?
Tony.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Tony.
Point of personal privilege, Mr. Chair?
Please.
Also want to recognize the fact that Tony Pellegrino served the town of Merrimack up in Concord for umpteen number of years as a state representative, you know, and that takes, you know, for all the stuff that he's done here in town, it takes a lot of work to sort through all the committees that he sat on legislatively, reading all the bills, voting and best representing Merrimack up in Concord, so on behalf of a grateful community, thank you for serving up in Concord as well, Tony, really appreciate it, thank you.
Now you have to learn to stay out of trouble.
All righty. I guess I should have pulled that off the table, but that's all right. So, item number two, under recognitions, resignations, and retirements, we have a few people, as Peter had pointed out, and I appreciate that, Peter. First with, from the police department, we have Holly Estey, and actually, we should probably, we'll do these one at a time, I guess, yeah, we'll come up individually, so is the chief.
I get to talk again, this is great. You know, a lot of people don't realize that, well, actually, they do realize, you know, you see the officers in uniform, and it's really easy to say, boy, they're out there, they're protecting us, they're working hard, they're doing everything. What you don't see are the people behind the walls of the police station. And Holly has been with us for, I'm going to say it, Holly, 20 years, and when I asked her, did you ever think you'd be here 20 years, she goes, I think I'll be here another 20, so, so I guess she did. But, you know, Holly and everyone who works over in the records division, division and dispatch, you know, they have a very important job, and a lot of people actually don't recognize that, because they don't see them. And on the flip side, too, Holly gets to read all the reports and, and know what's going on in town, but she never gets to put a name to, she never gets to put a face to a name that she reads. And when she said, oh, that's who that is, I realized, and it's like, boy, you, you know everything about everybody, but you don't know who they are. So, you know, I just, I want to thank you, Holly, 20 years is a long time to be at any organization, especially in today's day and age, and it's really important for us, and all of us, even though they're on the outside doing their work, you're on the inside doing very important work, and we appreciate you more than we could ever tell you, so thank you for 20 long years, and here's to 20 more.
And this, so the recognition of 20 years, 20-year service award presented to Holly D. Estey, in recognition of 20 years of service as a full-time employee of the town of Merrimack Police Department, it is a pleasure to present you with this plaque. We wish to extend our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance and dedication to duty, May 10th, 1998, May 10th, 2018, presented on behalf of the Town Council and the Town Manager. Thank you.
Detective Scott Park has 30 years of service. And he, oh, that's right, I'm sorry, he will be back, I think, likely at our next meeting.
So we get to be entertained?
No, he was spectacular. Anyhow, next, Captain Mike Dudash with 35 years of service, State of Fire Ford, 25, 1983.
Thirty-five years, God bless you.
You have to make the long walk over.
Looks like a civilian.
He does look like a civilian. Who is this guy? Thirty-five, 35 years, wow. That, that's a great, that's a great career right there. You know, as a police chief, it's really, there's certain things that, that are very important to me, and one of them is retention and longevity. So far, I think I win, because he, we, we started talking, actually, Captain LeVek and I started talking, I said, I don't really think there's been anyone in this department who has been here for 35 years or more. So officially, I want to tell you, actually hold the record for the longest-standing police officer in the town of Merrimack, so congratulations. You know, and along with that, a lot of people don't realize that 35 years is 35 years of being away from your family, your wife Denise, and your daughter Cassie, and now you have great, your grandson Zach, say hi. You know, a lot, a lot of people really don't understand that, yes, we signed on to this job, but you are away from your family, your kids, you know, know what it's like to be without you on Thanksgiving, and they know what it's like, you know, without you on Christmas morning. And that's a lot to ask of a person, and, you know, with you, you've done it so well, and you've done it, you are 150% committed to this town. For a lot of you who don't know, we actually joke with Captain Dudash, and we say, I'm sure you know that person, because he does actually know everybody in town. There's been times where people have actually been in the cell, we've arrested them, and they're looking in the camera saying, is Mike Dudash here? Because he actually does officially know everybody. But, you know, that comes at a price, and, and it's at great cost, sometimes your family, but, you know, we appreciate that you come in every day, and you make the public your number one priority, and for me, that's really important, because, you know, I do rely on you to do a lot of the public stuff, and that they love you, and you do a fantastic job, and it's just, you're showing guys like Kevin Manweli that it is possible to do this job for 35 years and be successful at it, so I just want to say thank you, you do a fantastic job. Thanks.
There's nothing to read from Michael, this is presented to him on behalf of the town.
The funny thing is, time does travel quickly, and it seemed like yesterday that I was here for my 30th year, and Dan Dwyer came up to me when I made my little speech and said, I have 10 more years to go, and he came up to me and he said, you're really doing 40, and I said, I'll make do 40. So I'm pretty, I'm five years away, so I'm getting closer. But I was a little paranoid when I was coming here, because I was anticipating a lamp with a leg. So I'm happy to see that it's not, it's not a leg, because my wife wouldn't let me put it in the front window, so. But with that in mind, I'm just a lucky guy, really, when it comes down to it, 35 years serving the town, it's all about family, all about the guys you work with, and obviously the council and the Town Manager, and Paul McCallie being behind you. So it's been a great ride, it's going to continue. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, could I have a moment, just to?
Absolutely, yes.
I just, for me, both of the folks honored here, Holly and Mike, I worked with them their entire careers. When I started, Mike actually introduced me to the department. As far as Mike goes, Mike embodies community policing, he's a hometown, hometown kid who grew up, he's made himself accessible to everybody in the community, he's, he personally handled a lot of issues in this community, a lot of people have reached out and continue to reach out to Mike for that personal touch. Mike, it's been my honor and privilege to work with you, my friend. And as far as Holly goes, she's one of the original founders of the Shark Tank. Holly, we would come in there, Holly and a number of the other ladies always had our back, always helped us out when we needed things in the last minute, and God knows, as a rookie patrolman, there were times that, you know, if I didn't have you and several of those other ladies helping out, you know, and all the various things that you've done from prosecution to public records and so forth, again, like the chief said, your work's invaluable, too. Thanks, Holly.
Thanks, Pete. Congratulations to Holly, thank you, Holly, and Nancy, congratulations also.
The next on the agenda was Becky Stark, but she's not here this evening, she had 35 years of service as well. Then the last recognition is to Nancy, and I'd known Nancy for years, and I was just told today how to pronounce her last name, so I'm embarrassed to say I never knew it, because I never used it. Delor- Delor- Okay, there we go, so. It's Tuamala was one I could never get either, and now I've got that figured out finally, so. But Nancy has been with the town for 20 years, and if you want to come up, I guess Diane will be speaking.
I'm a little shorter than some of the others. So Nancy began her employment as an account clerk too, with the town of Merrimack, on June 1st, 1988. Sorry, 98, see, I had to put my glasses on, thank you. Nancy was the second person in the department that I hired. It was a privilege for me to hire her. She was very excited about coming here, and I was very excited about her coming here, because she had experience. She had worked for the city of Nashua, and so she was the first person that I hired that ever had experience, and I can tell you, in the 29 years that I've been with the town of Merrimack, it has only happened three times, so she's one of three that have come to us with any type of municipal experience. It is not an easy job to learn, there's a huge learning curve, six months to a year. It is not easy to be one of the faces of the town of Merrimack, dealing with the public day in and day out. Every day, Nancy puts a smile on her face, she's out at the window, she's greeting the customers, she's often cashed up early in the morning, she waits on customers early, she'll take customers late, she is really one of those who will go to and do what needs to be done to get the customer serviced happily and with a smile. During the years, Nancy has developed a relationship primarily with most all of her customers. She has a special soft spot for the elderly, and the customers and the residents in town do appreciate her, she receives several accolades regularly from them, they all know her after 20 years, she has great relationships with them. Things have changed a lot since she started with the town clerk's office, a lot of technological changes, we actually used typewriters when she first started working in the department. Motor vehicles have changed tremendously, there is a humongous wealth of information, laws, rules, state, local, county, that she has to know every day to do her job. When she started with motor vehicles, there were a small handful of transactions that we used to do here at the town hall, and now we primarily do most everything that the DMV does, and she needs to know how to do it all. Nancy's cover letter when she applied for the position states in part, "I enjoy working in this field and may prove to be an asset to the town of Merrimack." I can honestly say Nancy has definitely proven it by achieving her 20-year tenure. As Chief, Chief Roy mentioned, longevity, institutional knowledge, all of those things are so very important. She's very dedicated, you're not only an asset to me, but to the entire staff in the town of Merrimack, you make us all proud. Congratulations, and I don't know if we'll have another 20 years with you, but I'm not getting my sense. But it's quite an achievement to do what you, you do, day in and day out on the window.
And I still enjoy it, and it's gone by so fast, you just can't really understand where the time went, but it's, it's been all good. All the changes have been hopefully improvements for everybody. I found them helpful, not using typewriters. But it's challenging sometimes, you know, it can be frustrating when times are busy, elections are coming up, and that's a busy time, people want registered votes, but we'll take care of it and get it all done for you, and I appreciate your support in all the years, and it's been a, a good ride, I've met a lot of great people, and the residents and employees and everybody that I've worked with, so it's been great, thank you, congratulations.
A plaque of your recognition of your 20, it's 20-year service award, presented to Nancy Delor-
Deloria.
Deloria. All these years, I'm so embarrassed.
It's French.
So, in recognition of 20 years of service as a full-time employee of the town of Merrimack, Town Clerk Tax Collector Department, it is a pleasure to present you with this plaque, and we wish to extend our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance and dedication to duty, June 1st, 1998 to June 1st, 2018, presented on behalf of the Town Council and the Town Manager.
Thank you very much.
Nancy, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
And Mr. Chairman, I thought the town clerk said it best about Nancy being the face of Merrimack. All the women that work at the town clerk's office, day in, day out, they are the faces of Merrimack, and I think we should be very lucky to have Nancy's 20 years, and hopefully a couple more moving forward, so thank you again, Nancy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Bill. All righty.
Let's get back up to comments from the press and public, and thanks for your patience. If you'd like to address the council, you could step up to this mic or sit at this table right here.
You can, you can sit here if you'd like, or stand there. It's either way.
Whichever, yep. And it's on.
Hi, my name's Steve Perlett, and I hate to be negative after all that positivity, but I felt compelled to say something tonight.
Yep, you have to state your address as well as your name, Steve.
To Suncliff Terrace, in Merrimack. The negativity I have to address tonight is something that I found, I just moved back here after about eight years of taking care of my parents and moved back, bought a home. And so I'm here for the long haul. And one of the first things I found when I talked to a lot of the folks, taking my own straw poll, was the problem that folks have been having with Comcast. And one of the things that I didn't like about it right off the bat was the fact that it's a monopoly and that's already bad enough by itself. But worse yet, they've been breaching contracts with every single one. Not, there's no exceptions there. Everyone I've talked to, and I've talked to literally scores of people about this, every person, to the man and woman, not only expressed the fact that they didn't like Comcast, but they use the H-word. They hardly ever use the H-word unless you really feel strongly about it. They vehemently dislike these people. And the reason is, and the reason why it should be brought to your attention as a council, and I'm happy to see that it's on the agenda tonight, is that just like myself and my own business and you folks with all of the contractors that you deal with and everybody else who has a business, we have to adhere to the contracts that we sign onto. And when you sign the contract with Comcast and they with you, they had an agreement with you that they provide the service that they had promised and make their, their customers, your constituents, happy with the service that they claim that they were going to provide. And be honest, by an implication of the contract itself. I know myself, when I run my business, I don't have to be told legally to do it, I just do it. But they evidently have to, and even so, they're legally bound. They haven't been adhering to their contract after somebody actually gets a contract with this company invariably. And when I say invariably, I mean consistently. It's just a continuous pattern of disregard for adhering to the words in their contract. And people are just fed up. That's what I've found since I've been here in Merrimack. The curious part for me is that I haven't heard anybody actually say it on the news or anything like that, but they're very willing to say it when you ask them personally. So I'm wondering, how can we change that? Because that's the only way it's going to change. Because let's face it, they're a behemoth. And unless we all gather together and we, as a unit, say, hey, we've had enough with this. We're tired of you breaching the contract, and it's time that you actually adhere to it like every other law-abiding person in our town. So I know that you're going to consider the possibility of bringing on another cable provider. What I'm asking you tonight is, and I'm imploring you tonight, to really, really take a close look at this. If it were me, I'd probably get on and talk on the actual television station here in our town and ask for people to say their piece and hear the real people. Because people are just too quiet about it. And to me, when this continues on and nothing's done, we're basically enabling them to operate in impunity, and that's not right. So with all that negativity, I want to thank you for putting it on the agenda, and I hope, hopefully you'll carry through on that. And I mean really carry through on it passionately, because there's a lot of people that are very passionate about it. It might be only TV, but that's not the point. The point is, and this is what I gathered from everybody I talked to, was a strong sense, almost a pathetic sense of hopelessness and powerlessness. And that shouldn't happen in this country. It shouldn't happen in this town. And it was, I was saddened by it and frankly disgusted by it, too. So that's my piece.
If anybody further would like to address the council?
Carol DePiero, 10 Cambridge Drive. I just wanted to thank you, Bill and others, for the idea of bringing DES back out here to actually say what their plan is going to be about detections of 19,000 parts per trillion and not just monitor it. We've got to do something about this. So thank you for that idea.
Is there anybody further who would like to address the council? Seeing none, what I would like to do, let me see where I am. Bear with me. Yes, I'd, we have an Eagle Scout project under new business item number one. Boy Scout Brigham Parker from Troop 48. I'd like to, without objection, move that forward. It's Brigham, yeah, if you'd like to, feel free to step up. You can get ready to fire up your presentation. He's here proposing to construct an outdoor classroom in Greater Woods directly behind the middle school, replacing the previous one, which was, has weathered with time. That makes me very old because I remember when they put that in, and it fits weather.
I remember that, too.
Gosh.
Yeah, I do, too.
Thank you for coming this evening.
Sorry, hello. So I'm, my name is Brigham Parker, and I'd first like to thank you all for taking your time to listen to what I have to say and to hopefully approve also my, my project idea. But so I'm, I'm a life scout in Troop 48 in Merrimack, and I'm working on my Eagle Scout project. And for that project, I am hoping on completing a, an outdoor classroom behind the middle school in Merrimack's Greater Woods. And so I've come before you for your, hopefully for your approval and any ideas that you might have for me. Okay. So to start out, the goal for this project and the goal for, I guess, really, yeah, I just, I guess for this project is just what it says up there, to create a permanent, comfortable, functional setting in nature where families, community groups, school classes, and others can gather together for, for learning and to spend fun, have fun together in this, in this kind of natural environment. Okay, so the location for the project is about 500 feet north of the Merrimack Middle School, right next to the Beaver Field there and west of Bambi Trail and Silverdough Lane. So it's about, again, it's about 500 feet north of the Merrimack Middle School. So this is just another image there. The, the red markings is a, is a wide-open trail. It's called the Education Loop Trail that leads right up to the project site. And so it's easily accessible, it's basically right out of the back door of the Merrimack Middle School. So it's easily accessible from the public standpoint and from the school standpoint for classes. Okay, so the past and current outdoor classroom, this, this section of it is, on the left, you can see the past condition. And so when the Conservation Commission was created, the town put it in the plan to create this outdoor classroom. So when it was created, that is, that is what it looked like. And I, I've heard it, it was suitable to the conditions and it was, it was used. But since then, due to kind of underuse and did a kind of disrepair and the fact that the, the wood that was used was not treated or any kind, or one wasn't really put in there permanently, it's fallen into major disrepair. And many of the benches, or most of the benches, have been moved. And in fact, some of them are completely, have been completely pulled out due to their, the fact that they've been come rotted out and just broken. And as you can see in the right picture, have been moved into a little firing there. So definitely not an outdoor classroom anymore. So my proposal for the classroom looks somewhat like this. And so the idea is to have the presenter's, presenter's platform in front with two rows of six benches, 12 benches in total. And so I guess I'll just go straight into the kind of design behind both of those. So the presenter's platform is going to be an eight-foot by 10-foot structure. It's going to be also 10, 10 feet high in the front and eight, eight feet tall in the back. And it's going to include the two benches on the side for multiple presenters or possibly students, and the little ledge or shelf to, to put on awards or a chalkboard or a whiteboard onto there for use by the presenter or any type of group that needs to teach students or adults even. There. Any questions so far? Okay. So the benches are going to each be five feet long. These, I've considered making them longer, and they may, they may become longer as it, as it proceeds towards the back. So they, they should be between five to 10 feet long. They're going to be 15 inches wide, and they'll sit about two feet off the ground. Okay, so for the footings for the, both the benches and the presenter's platform, the idea behind that will be a, will be a circular cement footing with a four-by-four put directly in the cement wrapped in tar paper, as you can see in the image there. And so the footings will be placed two feet deep, and there'll be six footings for the teach, the presenter's or teacher's platform and two footings each for the 12 benches. The cost of the project is, I estimate it to be about $1,700 for materials, $100 for supplies, and another 100 for other needs such as renting a mixer or anything, anything other that may, may come up unexpectedly for the projects. Bring the total again to $1,900. To raise funds for the project, I, I'm going to go out to different businesses such as Lowe's and Home Depot and other local businesses to find material donations along with discounted, discounted prices. Also ask for cash contributions from friends and family and residents of Merrimack, and also be holding a pancake breakfast fundraiser to supplement the other two. The timeline for the project begins with the breakfast fundraiser, as I mentioned just before. That's on kind of mid-September, and I'm hoping to complete the entire project by mid-October, October 20th, to be specific, to have it all finished and, and laid out there. Okay, are there any questions that I have?
I did have a question. Go ahead, Tom.
So I'll go first. Looks good. Looks, looks really good. Congratulations on that. So now is it, I'm assuming it's pressure-treated wood?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. Now, where would you have the breakfast fundraiser? Any thoughts or?
Oh, yeah. We, yeah, we like to hold our, our troops pancake breakfast fundraiser, it's at 110 Concord Street, which is the church that I attend, the LDS church. So that's where I plan to hold the fundraiser.
Excellent. I do remember my question. Behind, I haven't been there since it was in the original picture. That's the last time I saw it. But, so the new, the current condition is a little different. But I kind of recall that you could see down at what is now a Beaver Meadow, I guess. Is that still able to be seen? I couldn't quite tell in the picture, but, and if, so my question was, if it is, will your, the stand for the presenters and everybody, will that obstruct anything that might have been otherwise considered a little view for a learning thing?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, um, yeah, so I have been there a little bit. And from the, from the area you, it's the kind of, the forest and stuff kind of covers it up during the summer months, the regular months that people would be out there. It does obstruct it a little bit. I did try to make up for that, if you can see it at all, by making the back not covered at all. So I, I tried to make it open, as open as possible while still maintaining the, the structure of and keeping it.
Very good.
But it shouldn't, hopefully it shouldn't obstruct too much from that.
Yeah, no, and I, I didn't even know if it was still noticeable because of that potential growth that has apparently happened. So. Bill and then Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brigham, awesome. This is the best part of the job, is hearing you talk and other life scouts talk. This is great. Really happy. Greater Woods is one of our crown jewels, and the fact that you're continuing to make it brighter is wonderful. So thank you very much for what you're doing. Two questions. How much cleanup is going to be involved with the old site? And I notice that's not on your schedule, but do you plan on doing that simultaneously as the build's going on?
Um, yeah, so I did, I did, I have talked to some of the commission members about that, and I'm, I'm not quite sure. I should really contact them a little more, but if, if needed, I will, I will plan on that being part of the preparation process.
I appreciate that. And secondly, I appreciate the outreach to the ConCon, but have you outreach to the school, school board to make them aware of your attentions? Because obviously they're going to benefit from, from your labors.
Yeah, I have called them. I haven't talked, I haven't talked with the principal or anything, but that is, that is a definite plan for the future for me to talk to one of them.
Okay, Mike, I would probably encourage you to give the superintendent a call.
Okay.
And I'm sure she'd be able to. March Giuffre will be happy to move mountains for you.
Awesome, thank you.
Anyway, very happy about the project, and I wish you success.
Okay.
Thank you, Brigham.
Thank you so much.
This, this project comes at a great time because the Conservation Commission is talking about bringing in, and they're actively looking for different presenters to, to work on the topic of whatever ecology, the actual forests and what's, and so forth. So Brigham's project is perfect, and it will only help with that program. So thank you, Brigham.
Thank you.
Nancy?
Thank you. It's a good thing, yeah, they had taken care of me. I would like to request that during the September 13th meeting, we make an announcement reminding them about the breakfast. Okay? And the second thing, and I made a comment to Tom while I was watching you, you are a very mature presenter. Number one, you didn't read it. You looked at the presentation and spoke. You had excellent eye contact, which is really unusual for a young person. So I compliment you for that. And you are very articulate. So I think we'll probably see you in politics down the road. You just did a very, very mature presentation. I compliment you.
Thank you so much.
So true. I wasn't able to do, I still can't do it that well. You did a very nice job.
Thank you so much.
If there's nothing further?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the town, Merrimack Town Council enthusiastically endorse and support life boy scout Brigham Parker from Troop 48, his proposal to construct an outdoor classroom in the Greater Woods directly behind Merrimack Middle School, replacing previous one, which has weathered time, and that furthermore, that the council authorize either the town manager or her proxy to, or the town council chairman to sign whatever documents are necessary to approve the project.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Boyce, second by Barbara. Any further discussion, Bill?
I refer the right honorable counsel to the comments made by my colleagues some moments ago.
Thank you. See, no further discussion. I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. 700. And do you, I don't know if you have paperwork with you this evening that needs a signature?
Um, yeah, I can go get it.
Okay, that'd be great. That way we can get it out of the way for you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Brigham, also, when you, if you lock in that date for the pancake, talk to town manager's office and let them know so we can put it on the agenda, when, dates, times, address, and all that stuff.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much.
All right. All right, we're back in order here. Under appointments, item number two is the annual review with the zoning board of adjustment. Per Town of Merrimack Charter, Article 66, at least annually, there should be a review with the zoning board of adjustment. And the agenda, this agenda is to highlight its significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns the council should know about or act upon. How are you? Mr. Chairman, council, how are we all this evening? Very well.
My name's Patrick Dwyer. I'm the chairman for the Zoning Board of Adjustments, Town Merrimack. You think you have in front of you the 2017 annual report. If you don't, a kind of synopsis. We granted 43 variances, denied nine, and had two withdrawal. Didn't see very many special exceptions and one equitable waiver. So. So it was a big year for finance, for variances. Lot of, lot in regards to setbacks, yard setbacks. Merrimack continues to have some very unique properties that were, in neighborhoods that were developed prior to the zoning ordinances being put in place by the town. So variances on setbacks for sheds and pools and fences, things to the like have, have come forward and continue to come forward. Basically could do the unique nature of, like I said, the properties. Not everything's just laid out perfectly square, so. And that's pretty much where we're at at the moment. You, I, the report that you have is, has been changed. Obviously, as we all know, Tony is not, is no longer a full board member. Actually, tonight you'll be looking at Kathleen Stroud, who will be stepping up from an alternate position to fill Tony's previous role. And then Drew Duffy, who's in the audience, is coming forward to the alternate role. So that will put us at a full board of eight. And that's pretty much, did I say that right? Yeah, quick math. That's pretty much where we're at from the ZBA. I don't know if there's any questions from the council?
Peter.
Patrick, just, there's a lot of folks at home and I'm not asking for a whole piece or whatever.
Peter.
There's a lot of folks at home that may not know what the zoning board does.
Okay.
Just a quick gist on, you know, kind of educate folks a little bit.
Sure. Sure. So the zoning board of adjustments for Merrimack is a quasi-judicial committee that is being charged with reviewing ordinances and variances and petitions from the Town of Merrimack, both from citizens and the, and the businesses, looking for relief on zoning laws set forth by the town and the state through RSAs. We are quasi-judicial, so every, all, there, everyone, all members are sworn, anybody speaking are sworn in. And we work in conjunction with the planning board and conservation committee to be able to help residents and businesses accommodate to the laws that are set forward in reviewing them in both legitimacy as well as their effect on the, the town and the, and the properties and values and things of that nature. Thank you. Welcome.
Good. So you have a full cast of members?
We have a full cast. This month we'll actually be holding the elections for chair and vice chair. So, yeah, you may not be here next year.
That's a, that's a feat because there are a lot of committees that are a little short these days. So that's very good. Normally we're begging for peoples, but I get, we don't have to do that. We do have other committees though, but, so.
We've been lucky to, we've been lucky. We have had some struggles having a full board. This is probably, this is my, I think my 10th year and this is probably one of the few times that we've had a full board.
Happy to hear that it's there. That's good. All right. If there's nothing further, thank you, Patrick.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
Have a great evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick.
Last time I signed without reading, I was in the Army for three years.
Our president.
Who? Who? If it needed a day, if it needed a day, you can say Tom. Okay. There's no public hearings. Legislative updates from our state representatives. Town manager's report. Eileen, do you have any big questions?
I just have one thing. The library summer reading challenge has officially ended as of August 15th with 646 participants across all age groups, reading for a total of over 15,600 hours during the eight-week program. Because we surpassed our 8,000-hour goal, they had 15,600, the Friends of the Library will be donating $400 to the United Way of Greater Nashua on behalf of our readers. Thank you to everyone for supporting such a great cause in our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Eileen. There's nothing on the consent agenda tonight and what I'd like to do once again, without objection, is move committee appointments ahead of the fence because there's some concern that the fence talk might go lengthy. So we have this evening, as Patrick had just said, we have Kathy, Kathy Stroud and Drew Duffy, who were, who were interviewed and are, is being, well, changed from an alternate to a full member. Kathy Stroud is moving up and Drew Duffy is taking the alternate position. And so I think true. Good.
Mr. Chairman, I move appointment of Kathleen Stroud as a full-time member of the zoning board.
Thank you, Tom. It's motion by Counselor Canning and second by Bill Boyd. Any further discussion on your motion?
No, I, she, she joined somewhat recently and I'm happy to see her moving up to the full-time position that's vacant at the moment and we appreciate her interest and willingness to do so.
Did you move on just Kathleen or did you do both?
Yeah, I did just one because the other one is actually appointing a new person to an alternate position.
Okay, very good. Then I'll take care of this first.
You want to vote on it?
Yes. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Seven zero zero. Thank you, Tom. Do I have? Oh, I don't know. Well, I have a pile here that's a little disorganized. There's a lot of stuff.
So Kathleen. There's a bunch today, dear.
If you don't mind, just, if you want to raise your right hand and just recite that.
Hi Kathleen Stroud, do solemnly swear and sincerely swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me as a full member of the zoning board of adjustment according to the best of my abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of this constitution and the laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you. [applause]
Mr. Chairman, in continuation of this subject, I was pleased to be able to interview Drew Duffy along with Patrick Dwyer Duffy. What should have been about a 15-minute interview turned into about a 45-minute interview because we had such a great time chatting and talking about what ZBA is and how people are coming forward to help out the town and things of that nature. And so it's my pleasure to move her nomination forward, to move Drew Duffy as an alternate member of the zoning board of adjustment.
Motion by Counselor Canning. Second by Counselor Boyd. Seeing no need for further discussion unless somebody's got something further, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Seven zero zero. Very good. True.
Sorry about that. Didn't mean to scare you.
Thank you so much. Absolutely. Don't be good. All right. If you don't mind, just raise your right hand and you can just read right through.
Drew Duffy, do solemnly swear to sincerely, and sincerely swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me as the alternate member of the zoning board of adjustment according to the best of my abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the, of this constitution of laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God. Right to the floor.
Tom, I suppose the sign is went down here on, as a town clerk just.
I don't think you need to do that. Well, yeah, you do there.
Item number three, under new business is committee appointment recommendations that councils to consider to point the following recommended individuals to Parks and Rec Committee pursuant to Charter, Article 6, Section 1. Brandy Nunez is the school board representative and Shannon Barnes is the alternate school board representative. And I don't, I'm not, don't know Brandy, but I know Shannon's not here, so we'll. Move approval. Motion by Counselor Boyd, second by Counselor Thornton. Any further discussion? No? Move the question, Mr. Chairman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. All right, and they'll just, I guess they just go down to see Diane. All right, item number four, under new business donation. Oh, the Watson fence, I was trying to avoid that, I guess, but, all right, sorry.
Change it, I don't care.
No, 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 we'll get it out of the way. Item number one, under old business, which puts us back in order, is Watson, Town Council discuss and consider the fencing options for Watson Park, which was, was it tabled or did we just have a discussion on it?
I think we tabled for more information, didn't we?
If it was tabled, we have to pull it off, take it off the table.
Tabled is a formal motion. This is just continued.
It was just continued? Okay. All right. Hi, Kyle.
Good evening, counselors. Is it possible to get Brigham back here to do this presentation?
Honest to goodness.
He was fantastic.
It's impressive.
How could you say no to that?
We can't say no to that. Well, we could.
You have before.
He, he comes with the big rants all the time.
Good evening, counsel. Kyle Fox, Public Works Director. We're here tonight to continue the discussion on the proposed Watson Park fence. The purpose of the fence would be to protect, to cordon off the parking lot area of the park, thereby protecting the rest of the park. There's been a number of issues over the past months and years of the park being open that people feel free to drive their vehicles down to the pavilion, down to other parts of the park where the grills are and whatnot. And, and perhaps it's time for, for the council to approve doing something out there. The previous town council meeting, there was a memo dated July 19th from me that, that gave a number of options and pricing for fences. So in the, in the meantime, since the last meeting, we had one of our summer interns make some calls and visit a couple fence places. And the, a couple of the results were that is, first, the, the, they confirmed the pricing that is in that July 19th memo is fairly accurate. And the second piece, they gave us, a couple companies gave us books, catalogs, I believe you all got a copy of those. The ones I distributed were fairly representative of all the folks that were talked to and they gave you tons of options in both vinyl or wood. And I don't envy all of you trying to whittle it down to one choice. Some of the comments that, that were made by the, the fencing folks were, you know, we explained the, the challenges of the project, the location, kind of making a corral and knowing that we're going to be, it's a public area, public space and people are prone to do things that you may not think they might, in addition to the, the snow plowing and, and maintenance efforts that we'll have to do and by closing it in on three sides, the snow is going to go somewhere. So they, they questioned the durability of, of all of their alternatives in, in that kind of setting. Obviously, we're very good at what we do and whatever you pick, we can, we can make work and we'll do a nice job. Particularly, some particular comments they made was with the vinyl, they recommended, there was a nice picture in, in the book of a, a rectangular beam that would, that would address the issue of sagging. The, the four-by-four sections that we had talked about last time can sag a little bit. They said that the thicker rectangular sections would prevent that. What their experience is with those kind of products in a public park setting is that being a flat rail, people tend to sit on them and break them. So that may not be a great choice. With the four-by-four diagonal section, they said that can, that can help it. They did say limit that to an eight-foot span, so we can do that. Regarding wood, again, there's a number of, of alternatives. There were cedar, paintable wood. There's a lot of different configurations we can do. The, the one thing I noted and they kind of backed it up is all of the wood connections on their styles are the, the slide-in types. So you've got your, your solid wood piece, but then it necks down to slide into the post holes. And of course, that's the weakest part. And if somebody sits on them, stands on them to jump over, I, I feel we'd probably be making some repairs. So, so that was kind of the update from, from our vendor research. I made a phone call to a guardrail company as well. One of the, one of the concerns for me is in terms of getting this installed, once, once whatever is approved, is proved, we need to get this installed. And of course, we have the complications with Watson Park and the soils. And we have a soil management plan. We can work through that. One thing that would make the project a whole lot simpler and a whole lot quicker is if we had a guardrail company come in and actually pound posts, similar to what they do on the side of the highway. We wouldn't need to worry about the soil management plan at all at that point. It would certainly save time and money, but acknowledging that the, the posts are bigger than, than what some have wanted and, and not, not really in the style necessarily of what the Parks and Rec Committee was hoping for. So that's kind of the update, where we are. Whatever, whatever the council decides to go with, if it's a wood option, we can certainly paint it any color. I think white would certainly be more attractive than the brown we do at our other parks. Vinyl is certainly attractive for us because it doesn't need to be painted, but it has its durability issues. So I guess with that, I'll open it up to any questions it might have and see where it goes.
Barbara?
So Kyle, you mentioned about having someone come in and pound the posts down. How thick around would the posts have to be at that point?
So.
For that machine?
Right. So I called and asked a question. I actually haven't got a call back on that yet. The typical guardrail post is six by eight.
Okay.
So a little bit bigger than, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Which is actually five and a quarter by seven and a quarter.
So it's not?
It's not gigantic.
Terribly bigger.
Right.
Okay.
It's in comparison, the, the posts that are at Bishop Field and Veterans Park and all the other parks we put it at are six by sixes.
Right.
So it's just an inch and a, well, two inches bigger in the, the long dimension.
But I can see where it would have to be thicker to take the stress of the.
Yeah, I, I believe they could do a six by six. I didn't get that answer back in time for the meeting. I did ask that question.
So I don't know what the downside to that would be, because they're, they're not going
to be metal, right?
No.
Right, okay.
No, it would be wooden posts.
Okay.
When you, when you look at guardrails, new guardrail installations now, both the state and us use metal installations, steel posts, galvanized. But traditionally, and if you look around Merrimack, most of the guardrail is wooden post guardrail, so it's a six by eight post that goes in the ground, and there's a six by eight block in front that actually holds the rail on.
Yeah, Vermont, I think that's all, I don't know if they still do, but they used to only use those, the wooden guardrails like that.
Yeah.
On their highways.
The steel is relatively new to New Hampshire as well.
Yeah. Yes.
Anyway, Kyle, you're not suggesting that we put guardrail up, are you?
No, what I would suggest is if we go that route, that we pound either the six by six or the six by eights, and then we would do, we, we could do a number of options. We could do our typical, which is our two by eight rails that I suggested originally, bolted right onto the face, durable, long-lasting and secure installation. We could try and find some sort of connection to do the diagonal four by fours in between. I have had a hard time finding any hardware. All three companies that we talked to didn't have any hardware, and the only suggestion they made was go to the granite company that does the granite posts, and they have the, the piece of hardware that, that goes into the granite posts, and then it has the bracket that you screw the four by fours into. We could certainly do that, I, I think that's just a matter of drilling a hole into the post, so I think that would be fairly simple, but surprisingly, they, they don't make a, they don't make hardware readily available to connect.
For a wooden post.
Connect a wooden rail inside a post.
Right.
Okay.
Go here.
Kyle, so if we, if we didn't go with the route you talked about, the six by.
Peter.
Oh, sorry. Six by six, and we went with a regular wooden post and drilled down in, I mean, I mean, how, what are we looking at? How much harder is it going to be to do that with the, with the, with the, I guess, the EPA or the DES standards on that property? I thought we were kind of gotten through that now because we're moving through with the tennis court slash, I mean volleyball court slash ice rinking or anything.
So, so the complication, it's so, the AUR that's on the site, that's approval use required, that's the DES document that places restrictions on the activities on the site, one of which is excavating below two feet. We have an approved soil management plan that's approved by DES that allows us to do this. What we would have to do, there's a number of, the, the document was fairly long, but there's a number of key things that we would have to do. First, we need a contractor that's forty hour OSHA certified. We need to have air meters at all times to, to check the air near the workers. If we do get any readings, then there's, there's instructions on what to there, what to do there. If the readings are, as soon as you hear the readings, all work has to stop. Employees need to move away from the site and you keep monitoring. If the levels come back down, they can continue working. If they stay up, then you need to find another plan. The depths we're talking about, I don't anticipate that being a problem, and the quantities we're talking about, they're relatively small holes. The, the next part of it is, so the first two feet of soil, we have to dig out, place on poly, so it doesn't mix in with the other soils. Then the, the next two feet of soil, we have to put on a separate piece of poly, plastic, so that it doesn't mix in. Then we have to put the, the bottom two feet back in, that has to go back in the hole, we can't transport that. The top two feet, obviously, we need to take away because we do need to make room for some concrete. So that's the complication with, with digging. It's, it's, it'll be a lengthy task, just because you're doing everything twice, essentially. It's not a matter of just dropping the auger four feet and making a hole and pouring the concrete. It, it does add a level of complication because of the restrictions. Okay. Thank you.
Nancy.
In the other parks, do we pole drive those in?
No, those have all been augered.
Okay. To me, to me, to me, it's obvious we should do the pole driving. I mean, in many ways, just the number of hours, I'm not sure what the difference in cost would be. I know we could probably do it the other way versus we have to hire a pole driver to do it, right? But then we have to think of how many hours would it cost for our people to do it and what is the equivalency measurement? So in my idea, my opinion is, one, I, I love vinyl, but I think it's very impractical because it's for parking lot. Boy, didn't that sound like a Yankee? A parking lot. Boston, as I suppose I should say more. And this, it's just going to happen. There are cars that are going to go in and dent it and with, you know, not with intention, it just will happen. So to me, although I love vinyl, if it was more durable, I'd probably consider it, but I think it has to be wood, and I think it has to be pile driven. Now, what we do with it beyond that, I don't know, but that's my opinion.
I agree. I think, if I could touch on that point real briefly, so everything I've given you up to date is cost of materials only, and, and you hit on a really important aspect. Pile driving goes very fast. You can do hundreds and thousands of feet a day. For us to auger these holes, it, it's going to take us a long time, and if you factor in the opportunity cost, we, we already pay the employees, so there's no outside cost or extra cost, but there's other stuff we're not getting done. Right. So I appreciate that.
Peter.
We had a Parks and Rec meeting last night, and we touched on this, and touched on the, the vinyl fence and the issues and the ground issues, and I think the, the Parks and Rec Committee recognized that, you know, there are, there are mitigating circumstances, so, you know, overall, I think we had a unanimous group that they understood and knew that maybe vinyl wasn't the way that it was going to, it was going to go, so.
So, does anybody have a solution?
Well, I mean, to Council Harrington's point, I think with power driving is the best way to go to get the poles in, cost efficient, obviously better than what Kyle was saying about digging up earth and things like that. And then, you know, and going with, you know, I would suggest going with the wood and maybe looking at the diamond to get a little bit more aesthetics, looking, looking with the brackets and whatnot, and see how sturdy that would be. So it does, it's, you know, I like the typical fence. Um, you know, I like the parks, the parks that we have now and the typical fence, but I know, I understand it's town center and whatnot, but maybe look into something like that and see if that can be feasible and be done and have strength to it. So if it is climbed on or climbed over or hit or something, it's not going to fall off and the maintenance won't be as bad. That's just my suggestion.
I totally, I totally agree with that concept. I think that's a, a nice compromise, to have the durability and yet have a little bit nicer style because of what it is. And if you come back and say it's not feasible or it's horrendously expensive, then we can, we have, we have another option. We can go with what we have.
Yeah. Tom, you have?
Yeah, I just agree with what is being said right now, that, that we drive those poles in and we use the diagonal posts or rails, the diamond rails to, to make it look a little bit nicer, painted as necessary. I think if you can get those brackets you're talking about, maintenance is going to be a lot easier, you can replace a.
Definitely.
Single diamond board, diamond shaped board fairly rapidly that way, and so having those poles in there nice and solid would make the whole thing look like a very aesthetically pleasing center of town type of project.
Agreed.
I don't know if we officially agreed to the larger size that the Parks and Rec was requesting, but I think we should go for that as well in the plan, which was not what you originally showed us, but to include the extra parking, because I think we're only going to need more parking there as it gets more and more utilized.
The extra parking area was shown in the, the second memo, the July 19 memo.
Was it? I'm sorry.
It adds, it adds basically what they, they, they approved at their meeting.
Right.
Was recommending an additional fifty feet of parking lot, which equates to a hundred feet of fence.
Right.
Pete's next.
So if I'm listening right now, we would paint this fence white?
If that's what you want, sure.
I like the wood.
I like the wood.
I like the wood.
It would, but it could be painted white or stained or painted brown, I mean, but.
Yeah, in, in the brochure, I'm sorry, it says don't paint, stain.
Stain, yeah.
I have to apologize.
You're talking about a cedar fence? I, I would.
Yeah, I don't, but I don't think we're using the, the products we're seeing here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Quick question.
Nancy.
Is there any reason why there should be access to the back part, like a fence or a movable part? Is it going to be?
It's got a gate in there.
There is going to be a gate, okay.
Yeah, we, at, at the end of it, near where the, the, okay.
I think that's all my question, because I know there are occasions where you need accessibility, even so whatever.
Yeah, it's primarily for us, it's the access for our sewer folks to get to the interceptor.
That answers my question, thank you.
Removing trash from around the gazebo and whatever.
Yep.
So Kyle, going this route, as explained, and it sounds like we're on agreement with it, do we have an estimated cost?
I, I think ballpark cost is going to be around fifteen thousand, all in.
You got it.
Which equates to about thirty dollars a foot. Sure.
All right. Somebody?
So I move to approve DPW moving forward with, or Department, Public Works Department moving forward with the concepts discussed here at the town council meeting of a fence at Watson Park with the poles piled driven in instead of augered in, and diamond shaped rails between the posts, bracketed as necessary.
I'll second.
Made of wood.
Made of wood, not vinyl, yes.
So is it going to be pressure treated or are we going to be doing?
Without a doubt, yeah, pressure treated. The, the, the posts would have to be pressure treated, and I think it might, I think it'd be too much of a contrast to do the rails in cedar.
It would be, I agree.
Where the posts are pressure treated.
Yeah, and being pressure treated, you're going to want to paint it something.
Right.
Just to have it look like something green and yellow.
Better, but if you can.
And just so there's no surprises, when we do these, the pressure treat, you know, depending how wet it is, sometimes it's very wet when you buy it, sometimes a little drier. But we always let it season for a year.
Yeah.
Before painting it.
Right. That'll give us plenty of time to think about whether we need it.
That's true.
White or brown or green or.
There'll be another half hour conversation on that.
Certainly.
All right.
You're learning fast.
All right, is there any further discussion?
Actually, this is fast.
Saying none, I'll call the question, just Nancy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, seven zero zero. Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kyle.
Kyle, thank you.
I think, unless I've skipped over another thing, I think we're item number four, under new business.
Correct, Mr. Chairman.
The council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of two hundred and ten dollars from OVP Management, which, as you all probably remember, is the Merrimack Three Sixty Shopping Plaza. The donation to the Parks and Rec Department for the Camp Scholarship Fund pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five B and Charter Article Eight, Section Fifteen.
The Three Sixty Shopping came in and actually gave us more money than they said before. So they already gave a donation earlier this summer. When they came back, they said we have an extra two hundred and ten dollars, so said thank you very much.
Thank you.
For bringing it forward for council to approve, please.
Yes. Perfect.
Still moved.
Motion by Nancy, seconded by Tom Thornton. Further discussion on your motion?
No, I think it's pretty obvious.
It is obvious, and with thanks, of course. I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, seven zero zero.
Okay, item number five, under new business and other donation, the council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of one thousand fifty dollars from Merrimack Friends and Families to the Parks and Recreation Department for the Camp Scholarship Fund pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five B and Charter Article Eight, Section Fifteen.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion by Council Boyd, Albert, seconded by Councilor Boyd. Do you have discussion on your motion, though?
It's not my motion, it's Council Albert's motion.
Council Albert.
No, I don't.
Okay, Paul, did you have some discussion?
No discussion, I just wanted to bring to the council, to the council, is that Merrimack Friends and Family is another one of those organizations that have been very generous to.
All the time.
To the town, and they do the yard sales and give us money and, and support us in a lot of different ways, so it might be one of those behoove them to.
I think it is. I, I agree.
Absolutely.
Paul, I mentioned that at the Parks and Rec meeting, Matt brought that up, and he indicated to me that thank you letters, and I thought a certificate of appreciation was sent to all these various groups that donated to the camp, so you might want to just check with them.
Yeah, yeah, they, they do get a thank you. I know downstairs in, in the town manager's office, Becky does do thank you letters as well.
But I think the appreciation plaque really reflects the continuous.
Oh yeah, no, great, thank you Merrimack Friends and Family and I support a plaque.
Yep, I got appreciation plaque right down here.
Yep.
Thank you, Paul.
Perfect. All right, any further discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, seven zero zero.
Item number six, under new business, the council to consider the acceptance of recommended changes to Chapter A, one ninety-eight of the Administrative Code of the Merrimack Town Code pursuant to our Charter Article Five. And this is, the deputy chief in the police department position had been dropped out of the code probably seven years ago, I'd say.
Yep.
And, and so this is so we can put this back in place because there's been a change without that ability, without the change in code, so chief.
I'll defer. I'll defer.
You defer to me, thank you. So, yes, this is Sharon, Sharon's Eagle, I, our HR specialist. When we were going through the process of, of talking about hiring the person and putting together job qualifications and, and all those kinds of things, Sharon figured out, as Finley had said, that the, the code did not reflect the departments in the way that they, that it should as far as the divisions are concerned, and so we have, that's what we have for you, so that we can proceed with that. There's no, there's no changes. It, it was confused, Tom and I looked at it, and it was confusing to us because it looked like we were adding positions and not eliminating ones, but in reality, the, it, all it does is it lists the divisions and then it talks about who the, who the, the individual, the individual title of the person who's in charge of those. So you have patrol, and it's this person, and you have administrative services and you have that. So that's, that's why it looks like that.
Correct.
I'm so glad that you.
That's officiety. Who's got the motion?
Done.
Yes, Nancy.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, presently, we have two divisions, each headed by a captain. The operations and administration and support services. What you're asking is for three divisions, legal being separate from what it is now under operations, is that right? Because the deputy chief is going to be solely responsible for that, it's not the captains.
Correct. You're correct and not correct. You're correct, let's just leave it at that.
Well, that's not in the case for me.
You're correct, but.
We, we do have more than two divisions currently. There's the administrative and support services division, communications division, criminal investigations, there's a lot of divisions. investigations, there's a lot of divisions. The patrol division, the one we are trying, legal was under the administrative and support services division. We are now just trying to make that a separate division. So there's more than two, there's two captains who oversee their respective divisions.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
Correct, but, so then, yes, there's still, there currently is two captains, there has been two captains for over, over eight years now. Actually, I think longer than that, so, so over a long time. So the, the one addition that we do, are making is just that deputy chief's position.
So we're keeping the two captains.
Correct. We eliminated a lieutenant.
Right, but there is one detective lieutenant that's still going to be with the criminal.
Correct, he oversees the criminal division specifically, and he answers to the administrative and support services captain.
Correct. But the deputy chief will be solely responsible for the legal division as well as assisting you with the operations and.
Yes, that's correct.
Peter.
Who's overseeing the patrol division?
The operations captain, that will still remain the same. So the operations captain still oversees the.
There's no legal, there's no administrative captain?
No, there is, they oversee the criminal division, communications division, and community services.
Okay, so you've got your administrative captain, your patrol captain, and the deputy.
Peter.
You've got your administrative captain, your patrol captain, and your deputy chief.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I was recalling that we were actually going to eliminate one of the captain positions. Is that a change from our previous discussion?
No, we eliminated the lieutenant's position. We eliminated, we have, prior to July of two thousand eighteen, we had an administrative services lieutenant, and that was the position that we eliminated.
Okay, not what I recall, it's not necessarily, my recollection is not necessarily correct, I just had misunderstood.
So it's really just a change in the organizational chart?
Correct.
Essentially.
Correct.
Okay, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chief. Does this mean the prosecutor is going to directly report to the deputy?
That is correct. If you'd like, I, I could, I'll just explain why, if it makes it easier.
I'd like to hear the philosophical perspective behind it, if that's possible, Chief.
The prosecutor handles both, so if you have all the divisions, the prosecutor handles things from the patrol division when the, when the officers make the arrests on the street. The prosecutor is also responsible when the detectives have their questions, which is on the administrative side, because patrol and detectives are on two different sides of the building, if you will, both responsible to two separate captains. So to kind of streamline it, we are going to put it under the deputy chief, so that way, there's no question whether, who the prosecutor goes to. Do I go to the operations captain or do I go to the administrative captain for this? They just go directly to the deputy chief.
No, that makes sense, I appreciate that. And through, through the chair, the council can, I had the same impression as well. I, I thought they were eliminating your captain's position as well, so I don't think you're mistaken.
Well, that's what it sounded like Peter was saying as well, so several of us were confused.
Well, I'm just saying that there's a communication gap, that's all. Thank you.
All right, no further discussion? Somebody like to move this to a second reading? Is it a second?
No, it's acceptance, it says to consider acceptance. So Mr. Chairman, I move that the town council accept the recommended changes to chapter A one ninety-eight of the administrative code of the Merrimack Town Code pursuant to Charter Article five.
Okay, it, it should be moved as well to a second reading or a public hearing.
I'm sorry?
Public hearing.
And move to a public hearing.
Please, thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion by Council Boyd, seconded by Nancy. Any further discussion, Bill, on your motion?
Rest ipse logarum, Mr. Chairman.
It's Latin.
Rest ipse logarum means the thing speaks for itself.
Of course we meant that. Of course you should, it took three and a half years of Latin, what are you kidding me? About fifty years ago. So anyhow, no further discussion, call the question, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstain, seven zero zero. Thank you.
Chief, thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Okay, item number seven under new business is the cable franchise renewal discussion. And Nick is here this evening to answer questions and tell us what it's all about.
Sure, good evening.
Did you hear the testimony questions from the community at the very beginning of the meeting? There was a citizen here talking about this, did you hear about it?
I didn't, I didn't pick up on that.
Okay, well Charter, you can do your presentation, we'll try to get an answer for this gentleman who had a question at the beginning.
Council Harrington, I believe that three or four of those questions will be answered through Nick's presentation.
Okay, great.
And if not.
We just want to make sure we address it, that's all.
We can try to address it.
Absolutely. Thanks for having us. I'm Nicholas LaValle, I'm Town of Merrimack's media services coordinator. For those that haven't had a chance to meet me yet, I've been here for about fourteen years, we're approaching fourteen years. With me is Justin Slez, he's our assistant media services coordinator, he's approaching his fifth year here as well. And I point that out because this is actually my second franchise renewal process, because the current agreement that we're in was a ten-year agreement with any cable operator that chooses to do business here in Merrimack. I say any cable operator because truly that's what this is about, is that the franchising authority is the Merrimack Town Council. The franchise agreement is not exclusive contract with Comcast, that any cable provider can do business and provide cable services to the Town of Merrimack as long as they are adhering to the franchise agreement that you have approved and that you had set up. So it's a common misconception is that people think that there's, it's a monopoly, it's really not, it's just the way that the industry was set up and also reflective of what the industry has become. Additionally, this franchise agreement is only relative to cable services, it's not relative to internet services. So although cable, excuse me, Comcast provides internet services to residents in Merrimack, the franchise agreement is only relative to the cable TV portion of those services. You've received a draft agreement in your packets that was sent to us from Brian Christensen, our Comcast representative, to me, and I had forwarded it to the town council, and I know you've had about a week or so to look over that. One thing I do want to point out as well is that in this agreement, aside from it being relative to cable television services, not internet-based plans, the franchising authority, town council, does not have the ability to set the cable company's rates. That's another misconception, is that could the town council set a rate for cable services or, or keep a certain low rate? We can't tell Comcast how much they're going to charge for cable TV services. I've, I've spent just about as much time looking over the draft agreement as you have, Justin's also looked it over. Much of the current agreement is, is also in the draft agreement that you've received. I could just point out a couple of those highlights, if you guys would like to hear those. And I can go in order that they appear on the draft agreement as well. And one of the highlights, first highlight, is that cable services are available to all residents within the Town of Merrimack. That's under five dot one service availability. Additionally, any potential subscriber located in Merrimack without service may request a line extension to enable those services. That falls under that five dot one.
So what does that mean to us? Is that different than what's in the current agreement or?
It's, it's the same. Much of the current agreement and in the draft agreement, they're, they're very, they're very similar. So I just wanted to point out a couple of things that are the same.
Oh, okay, I thought you were.
Just a couple of highlights to, to further explain what the franchise agreement includes. Another highlight is that basic, basic services are provided for, for free to public buildings, municipal buildings, including school, police, and fire. That's under six dot six, connections and service, services to public buildings and I'm going to jump forward a little bit, under thirteen dot three, franchise, the franchisee, the Comcast must respond to interruption services within twenty-four hours of a call. And that, that's also relative to FCC regulations. I'd like to talk about franchise fees. Right now, in the current agreement, and it's retained in the draft agreement as well, the Town of Merrimack receives three point seven five percent franchise fees, which are gross annual revenues from cable subscribers. And traditionally, the town council has dedicated those funds to fund the town's media division, and that's how you're on TV right now. And all of our board and committee meetings are taped in public access. Folks in the residents are able to produce shows on the public access channel.
Nick, I'll just say, I'm sorry, Peter has.
Nick, you brought up something, just one step back.
Peter, you.
Mike Lee.
Sorry about this, bad night. The twenty-four, the twenty-four hour rule that you just cited, the twenty, the clause re, is there anybody or somehow is that monitored to find out if, if, if they violate that at all?
That's a good question, and I'm not sure if, if there is someone monitoring that.
I suspect if people knew, then they would start, you know, complaining. I, I didn't realize that was one of, you know, one of the deals, quite frankly, and so, you know, I don't know that a lot of people know that.
Yeah, I don't know if anybody does the FCC, you know, is this, and is this referring to me as a homeowner individually or the town in general, let's say after a storm or something?
It's listed in the franchise agreement as interruption of service, so I'm almost positive that would be anything that could interrupt, could interrupt your service.
Okay, because I'm thinking, okay, if you've got a disgruntled customer who's called Comcast and said, hey, you know, it's been over twenty-four hours, who would they report that to?
Sure.
And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, these are some questions you may not know, I get that.
Right.
But I, I guess I'm kind of curious too. I know I might call Comcast and complain and say, hey, you know, but.
I think you would, we, we have the franchise, you know, deal, that's part of our, our rules that they would have agreed to if they, if both parties signed, so I would imagine you'd have to come to the town to voice the complaint after you, I would call Comcast first, but.
Well, it's essentially a complaint, complaint resolution procedure is right in here.
Thirteen dot one.
But I think the, the point is, nobody knows that that's available. So perhaps we have to set up a procedure or somehow make it knowledgeable to the public that they have this in the contract.
I, I will say too, especially these past seven to ten years, our relationship with Comcast has been pretty good. And whenever there has been a resident who's called Town Hall and has complained about an issue, as long as someone downstairs gets me on the phone, I usually put Brian Christensen in touch with that person right away. And I'd say that most people that have gone that route get their issues resolved pretty quickly.
Is there anything that we can put on? Anything we can put on? You needed Tom Thornton over there, he's helping me keep it going. Is there any way, and I don't know the answer, but is there any way we can do something on the website where we could make that, if there are complaints, please, you know, first contact Comcast, obviously.
Right.
That should be a first step. But within a certain amount of time, you don't get a response, here's an option, please contact.
That's a, that's a good idea, that's a, that's a great idea.
I do believe that we can, we can do something underneath the media section of the website to that, saying if, if you've been out, please call Comcast, and actually put this section thirteen point five, like underneath the frickling, frickling ask questions, so we can do that.
Because that seems to be legitimate, because I didn't know that there was an option to even call you.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a great idea.
Okay, and just to add, some of that money is used for tax relief as well.
Well, it is, the, the, should I continue?
No, because Tom had a question, Barbara has something over here too, sorry.
Just to, just to put this in perspective, and I apologize if I missed it, if you've already said this, but the draft is not your draft, the draft is what Comcast is proposing.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Because I have, I also, you know, there's plenty of, I don't want to say there's a wish, I don't have a wish list, but there are definitely suggestions and, that I have that I'd love to see added to this, to this draft agreement. I'm not saying that this draft agreement is perfect and we should move forward with it immediately. I'm just saying that, that most, most of what is, is in the draft is consistent with what we've had. And now is the opportunity where you as a franchising authority can potentially add to it.
So you'll have suggestions?
Oh, sure, yeah, I have a couple.
I want to hear those suggestions.
Yeah. I think he's getting there. Well, and also, I, if I could just jump in, I, I'll just jump ahead real quick, just, you know, we're, we're talking about this tonight, this is just a discussion. The timeline that I would like to see moving forward with this is that we should have a public hearing, I'd love to have a public hearing a month from now, maybe your second week in September, so that way we do have the draft agreement on the website for a month, so the public can look at it, the public has plenty of time to know that this is happening. Obviously, we would likely invite Comcast to the public hearing as well, and it'd give you time with the document. We'd be able to hear from the public, and then from there, we can, we can bring forward it, our draft toward, to the town's attorney, and then eventually move forward. But this is just the first step in the process.
So we've gone through a lot of discussion here in Article thirteen, and you mentioned that somewhere in here it says that they'll respond in twenty-four hours. Can you be more specific about what the requirement is there? Because thirteen two just says that they'll maintain a twenty-four hour call center, and thirteen three just says there's an FCC regulation, which is not backed up by any data here, so I have no clue what it says.
Justin pulled that.
Yeah, I have the FCC, sorry. So the FCC, what do you want to call it, the title or chapter, subchapter, that they reference, seventy-six dot three oh nine, there's a whole list of different requirements laid out by the FCC. The one we're specifically referencing, I believe, let's have a look.
Three oh nine.
Three oh nine, C two, roman numeral two, so it says, the cable operator will begin working on service interruptions promptly and in no event later than twenty-four hours after, after the interruption becomes known.
Yeah, but that doesn't say that he'll resolve it in twenty-four hours, it merely says he's working on it.
Right.
And that could take ten or fifteen or forty days, I mean, it, we don't know how long it's going to take to solve it, just that he will start.
Right, yep.
Is all it says.
And I don't know that it's, and I don't know that that timeline is actually laid out, it's not in the FCCs in this word here, so that might be something to consider.
Okay, I mean, I think we started to, some of us started to believe that that meant they would resolve a problem in twenty-four hours, if it wasn't resolved, they should escalate it. Well, maybe they should, but down in thirteen five, it says it could take as much as ten days for the franchisee to, to submit the complaint to the, the cable company, and so we're not talking necessarily twenty-four hour responses on anybody's part at this point, only that we will be responsive, not that we will have responded in twenty-four hours. Acknowledging there's a problem in twenty-four hours sets off that clock, and, and, so I just wanted to try and get some clarity on that, thank you.
Nick, before you get there, you have two others, are you all set, Peter?
I'm good right now.
Okay, Barbara, Barbara's next.
So usually, I'm used to seeing in an agreement like this, something that gives up service agreements, you know, like when you deal with Windows, you know, IBM or whatever, you know, you get the service agreements, which is what I think Article thirteen is trying to allude to, what the service standards are. So it's not very clear exactly what the service standards are. And here's another thing, how does that compare with the contract that the individual citizen signs? Are they even remotely alike? And that might be an interesting thing to take a look at as well, because we don't want any kind of dichotomy between the two agreements, either the franchise agreement or the individual contract being signed by the different residents. Now here's an interesting thing, this is my second thing, because you said that we don't have any control over what Comcast actually bills people. Well, it came due two weeks ago from my usual call to Comcast to say, oh, you've just raised my rates up like forty dollars, let's talk about this, right? And I managed to get a lower rate, but here's the interesting. And I managed to get a lower rate, but here's the interesting thing. I was still being charged for high-def. The new contracts that they were coming out with, the new packages, the bundles, the charge for high-def was included in the package, because it's a mandatory now. And I asked the question, I said, what if I hadn't called to say, I'm not, I don't want, I want a cheaper package, what are we going to do about it? Would you have kept charging me X number of dollars for the high-def? Yes, we would have. So I think maybe we need to look at that a little bit to see, what are they charging for bundles? What's included in it? And make sure that some of these things are rolled in. If people are still out there paying high-def like I was, even though it was mandated, what, a year and a half, two years ago, they shouldn't be charged for it any longer. So, yeah, we do need to look at what their charging schedule, what their pricing schedule is. Just to make sure that there isn't any little loopholes in there.
Sure. I, I, what I was sort of alluding to at the, at the start of this discussion was that we, we can't set the actual rate. We can't tell them they can, they have to charge $19.95.
Right. But we can at least look and see where the inconsistencies are.
Inconsistencies, we can also, and this is in the, you'll, you'll find some of what you're asking for in the current franchise agreement and also in the draft. I don't have those numbers right in front of me.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I do know that it's in there, and also notifying, um, any changes to your bill is also in that draft agreement.
Good.
And, and the current agreement that we're in.
Well, and this is what frustrates people, because hearing that from you, I, I just pay the bill, and it's a brutal bill, quite frankly. But that should automatically come off. If that's no longer necessary, they should eliminate that on their own immediately. Um, and that they don't do it, that they would have left it on if Barbara didn't call, is really kind of disgusting.
Yeah.
So anyhow.
Yeah. And I, I don't, again, I don't necessarily disagree with.
No, no, I know.
What you're saying at all.
So, but that's something. I don't know if that could be put into this franchise agreement, but I, go ahead and you finish your presentation, because I'm interested in what further you might have.
Uh, one thing that I, I did notice while we're on, um, that section 13, one thing that I did notice that's in our current agreement, that's been omitted from this one, is that, uh, in the current agreement, uh, 13 dot 1 office, the franchisee Comcast shall maintain and operate a customer service office in an adjoining town for the purpose of receiving and resolving all complaints, including without limitation those regarding billing, service, and installation and equipment malfunctions, accepting return of converters, and answering general inquiries. So giving you a place to go and a person to talk to, not here in Merrimack, but in an adjoining town, Nashua or Manchester. That's omitted from the draft agreement. And in place is a customer call center, um, open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, including holidays. So I have an opinion about that. It's an, it's a negative one, obviously. I think there should be a place for Merrimack residents to be able to go to, to try to resolve some problems. But again, you are the franchising authority. I just thought that was interesting to point out and wanted to bring to your attention.
Guess what, Nick? I'm on the same page, because that was my question to you.
Right.
I'm with you on that.
Yeah.
I'm with you. What I, what I'd like, Nick, is if, I'd like your list of ideas, because this is your business. You, you know, you work this every day. I just pay a bill. I don't, I don't even watch it really, but, uh, so whatever your suggestions might be, I'm all ears as well as, you know, digging through this is, is tedious and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like to see is what you're suggesting.
Sure.
Like, you know, put the 13 dot 5 in what you're suggesting.
Yeah, at some point, let's, uh, we, I, we should have that so we could, you know, entertain your thoughts.
Sure.
And that would be good, but.
If I could talk about franchise fees. Uh, right now, the town of Merrimack receives 3.75% franchise fees. Gross annual revenues from cable TV subscribers goes to the town of Merrimack. The town council has traditionally dedicated those fees to our department to provide public access to residents and be able to record these meetings. And as Nancy pointed out during her comments, a portion of that does go back, has been dedicated or will occasionally go back to offset, um, property taxes. Comcast has changed how they compute, uh, just how much cable TV revenues, um, how much of their bundle packages, so if you subscribe to a bundle, if you have internet and cable TV. Um, these aren't exact numbers, but a few years ago, if, if you had a hundred-dollar cable package that included internet and cable, maybe it was 50/50. They changed the percentage of that. So in this past year, we've actually seen a drop in how much money we're receiving quarterly from franchise fees. So if you're subscribing to a package, um, that includes cable and internet, Comcast is saying that, well, more of that, that hundred dollars is going towards internet and less of it is for the cable TV portion. So we're seeing a decrease. The way that this industry has, has gone, especially the past few years, I talked about this to the town council nine years ago, but the past few years especially, is that more people are streaming content and they're, um, not relying on cable TV to watch their programming. For a while, the exception was live sports, live events, but even those, you could subscribe to a Major League Baseball package or an NFL package. That's the way that this industry is going. More people are streaming content through apps. They're subscribing to Hulu, they're subscribing to Netflix, they're subscribing to YouTube Red, they're subscribing to whatever.
Amazon.
Amazon. We don't receive any money from the internet side of things. So just as I started the beginning of this presentation was that, uh, this is all relative to cable TV, we don't see any of that 3.75% franchise fee from internet subscriptions. This industry has evolved and it's evolving very quick. I'm not suggesting that we raise the franchise fees to offset that, so we continuously receive about the same amount that we've been receiving each year. But one thing that did strike me, that's omitted from the draft agreement, that's in the current one, is that right now, up until January, we'll have the ability to raise the franchise fee during the franchise agreement. So at any given time over the next 10 years, um, or any given time over these past 10 years, we could have raised the 3.75% to up to 5% with a notice of 90 days. That's been omitted. So this is essentially our one chance to either raise the franchise fee to 4% or up to 5%. Or we can make sure that this, the ability to raise the franchise fee stays in the next agreement. I kind of struggle with, should we raise it now and forget about having the ability to raise it later? Or do we put the ability to raise it later? You know?
Yeah.
That's something that you, you'll have to decide.
Right.
And I struggle with, which is better myself, but I don't have the final say in this, so.
Well, it, it, where it's our franchise agreement with them, we have to have that discussion. I, I actually, in chatting with Paul earlier when this item was coming up, I, I'm interested in sending out an RFP. And, uh, I'd, I mean, we did it once before years ago, and there were no respondents. Um, and it might be the same way again, but we don't know that. And, and I, I suspect, I, I don't have a problem with Comcast, I have a problem with the price. It's stupid money. It's just insane what I get charged every month. And, uh, and I don't look at the bill except the grand total, so I don't know. I have all these extra charges that they don't take away. But I, I, I really believe if somebody could put in, you know, respond to an RFP, that 80% of the community would change just because of the price, not because of the, I, I have no beef with their service or any of that. Uh, it's, uh, it's just that it's, there's no real competition in it. Even though it's not a monopoly, as you pointed out, there's no real competition. So that's, I would like to do that. I want to have the public hearing. I'd love your ideas of what you would like to see changed in this draft agreement, because it is our agreement. It's our franchise. And so, um, you know, I mean, they, they did have a place in town 10 years ago, that went off. It could be an adjoining town. Now, as you point out, they want to go to 24-hour someplace and somewhere else, yeah. So.
Well, and that presents problems, because every other month, you have to bring the receiver in and change it out, because it dies all the time, so.
Yeah, you're right. Peter first in the bill.
Well, Nick, can you conclude?
No. Are you hoping that I have?
No, no. Just, I shouldn't have, I shouldn't have. I was going to wait till you were done. I apologize.
I'll wait.
Oh, okay. Yeah. And you could, you could do an RFP for sure. My, my, my thought is, with the changing industry, that the, the town of Merrimack may want to look more into an RFP for maybe an internet provider, um, given that that's the way that the industry is going. But, but again, this is exactly whatever you, you feel is necessary, so.
So can you do cable and internet with Comcast? Or is it one or the other? Or is it neither?
This is just relative to the cable.
Right, but can you add internet? So we get that to the franchise agreement?
Franchise agreement doesn't include internet services, no.
The current one doesn't, but what you.
This is a discussion.
You were just talking about, um, that we should contract, put a, put a RFP out for, um, for internet services.
Correct.
And what they're saying, it, what Tom is saying is, um, why don't we do that now with Comcast to include not only the cable, but the internet? I know it doesn't now, but do we have the latitude for that?
My understanding is the internet, the infrastructure, it's not regulated the same way that the cable TV portion is. It's a different set of regulations.
Right, I think the rule, the federal rule is probably precluded, because otherwise, I think more people would have done it already. That's my, my guess. I don't know that for, for anything more than just an opinion based on how much.
From 10 years ago.
Yeah.
I, in closing, I guess, um, some of the things that I'd like to propose, and it's, it's what some, our neighboring communities has done as well. So Bedford just went through this process, they're on the verge of finishing up their franchise renewal right now. Uh, Manchester's gone through the process. One of the things that Bedford has done was that during their negotiations, they, they really wanted to have an HD channel. They wanted their public, one of their public channels, when I say public, I mean just public education or government channels on their high-definition tier. Um, they were able to get that. It's not in the franchise agreement, but it was in a side letter, and Bedford is going to have a, a Bedford TV HD channel. We're overdue for that, and I understand that on our end, there's some infrastructure that would need to be updated in our head end here at Town Hall. I talked to Paul a little bit last week, um, and I know the CIP is due towards the end of the month. Um, we have, uh, just about $800,000 in our cable TV reserve fund. So we have money to upgrade our head end here. So, uh, I know in other communities where they've asked for, um, to have a channel on a high-def, on the high-definition tier, Comcast usually has fired back with, well, your head end isn't up to code. And, you know, we, we, we'd have the ability to do that. I'm confident that we'd have the ability to do that here with the amount of money that we have in the reserve fund to make sure that whatever we're outputting, uh, and our switchers and our playback system in our head end will be high-definition. I mean, we started that process years ago with the HD channel, the HD cameras that we have in our studio here and all the equipment that we use to produce content. I think that's, I think I've covered everything on my end. Uh, again, timeline for renewal process, this is just the initial discussion that we're having tonight. You guys have sat in the draft for a week. That's not a whole lot of time. Justin and I feel like we've had our eyes on this nearly every minute. We've been here the past week or so. And, um, I think we should have a public hearing the last week of September and, um, make sure that we'll get the draft agreement on the website and maybe some, some education material as to what this is and the things we spoke about tonight.
Okay. Peter.
Thanks, guys. I appreciate it. A couple of things. For the next, for the next hearing we have, can we have a PowerPoint presentation on it?
It's on.
Sure.
It is?
Yes, it's on.
No, I'm talking, oh, I think you're talking.
They're looking at the mic, and I'm saying, yes, it's on.
Yeah, it's on. All right, I know, okay. No, but can we get it on PowerPoint? So that folks at home might be able to see some of the things that we're talking about.
Sure.
Changes and possibility. Okay, and this is, we all sort of know the answer to this question, but we're going to say it anyways, because a lot of folks at home will want to put it in more plain English than acronyms. But if not Comcast, who else? Who else is out there? If we don't, if we don't agree to this, who else?
There's, uh, there's, there's a number of smaller cable companies, and then there's bigger conglomerates, but, I'm a, I'm a bit stumped at the moment.
Okay.
I'm so used to Comcast here in New Hampshire. In New Hampshire, it's just Comcast.
Okay.
Um, and that's the other thing that you'd have to consider in attracting another cable provider to do business in Merrimack. It's, it's an expensive endeavor. There's a lot of infrastructure. You know, we are situated just between Manchester and Nashua. You'd hope that someone, you know, another cable provider would, would want to gain those subscribers. And, you know, there's 8,000 homes in Merrimack?
Yeah, roughly.
Roughly.
Okay.
You know, would a cable provider come to town to do business with 8,000 homes? I'm not, I'm not entirely certain. And again, the future of this industry is, is going to be streaming, and I, and I.
It is.
You know, it's just the way it goes.
And then, and I, I think for me, just the folks at home need to hear you say that, so that they understand what our thought process is when we go through this. Okay, the agreement is for 10 years, but you said something, and I agree with this. The industry is evolving and evolving quickly. Why a 10-year agreement then? Why not say, because of that fact, why, why don't we use a short, why don't we have a shorter agreement? Because, you know, what if five years from now, there is a competitor?
Well, a competitor coming, can come in now.
Get their own franchise.
Having Comcast doesn't keep anybody else out.
A competitor could come to town tomorrow.
That's right.
They would have to adhere to the same franchise agreement. This is the agreement that you set for. So whether it's Comcast or three different other cable companies that want to come to town and do business, they would work under that agreement.
But still to my point, maybe we should think of a shorter agreement, shorter agreement. In light of these changes that, that are moving quickly, I agree with you, so. Maybe that's something you guys can look at. So that, that's all I have. Thank you.
The, the only point I want to make is to be able to reinforce. Around 10 years ago, we tried to get other cable companies to come in. Nobody wanted it. Fios, anything. We wanted to be able to have competition for Comcast. And I think there's a great misunderstanding, because we have Comcast, they're a monopoly, no one else can come in. That is inaccurate. We have attempted to provide competition. Nobody wants anything to do with it. That's the difficulty we have.
The other way to look at this as well is that you, you do have, you, you do have more options nowadays in terms of how to receive content. Before, when you were just going to watch television, if you were just going to watch programming, you just had cable television. And now we're getting content from everywhere, and it's dependent on either an internet connection or a cellular data connection. And then you're choosing, um, the different, uh, content providers, um, how, whatever type of programming that you're, programs that you're watching. It's almost à la carte, um, and you're just dependent on, on data, less dependent on Comcast. Now, I say less dependent on Comcast, because you're less dependent on cable. You're still relying them on internet, which, again.
Is pretty much Comcast.
Yeah, so. And that's, and that's why I said, that's why I had said a few times during this discussion is that, you know, you'd almost be better off trying to attract a, a company to provide internet service to town.
Mm-hmm. All right. Yeah. Tom?
Yeah, thanks. Um, Nicholas, I, I must admit, I allowed myself to be confused, because when I saw this package and I saw this, this label on the beginning of this draft document, which you're telling me came from the cable company, it says it's granted to Comcast. which you're telling me came from the cable company, it says it's granted to Comcast by the Town Council. So if we put this on the web, I don't want this page on there at all, because this is not granted by the Town Council on these dates. Even though it says draft on it, the Town Council has absolutely nothing to do with what was written here, except to say that they sort of majored it to the previous one that they're currently operating under. And so I walked into this confused, thinking this was something that we were promoting, and then you're telling me right away, this is something they're promoting, and we're now reacting to it.
Right.
And, yeah, we can spend, we can all spend a week or two looking at it and trying to decipher 30 some odd pages or 40 pages, whatever it is, of legalese and stuff like that. It's just not my position to do that. And, and I'm totally lost trying to accomplish that. I'm more than happy to deal with, and, and this page that I think came from you.
I did write that, yes.
Is very fine print. For somebody like myself, it's difficult to read, and, which is why I'm wearing my glasses as I'm talking, because I can't, I can't even read it with my glasses.
Gotcha.
And so i- if you could make things a little bit easier for us to understand whose material we're dealing with, I would appreciate it.
Sure.
You've got a lot of the stuff in here, basically, of what you presented tonight. And I didn't even realize it because it was so small, I, I thought it was some legal document as well, and I was trying to look at this franchise agreement from the Town Council, which isn't from the Town Council. So I, I think if we go forward, we need to come up with our draft.
Sure.
Of what the franchise agreement ought to be, and that's what we should talk about. So if you put this on the web, make it very clear, this is a draft from the cable company of what they would like. And you can put up the current franchise agreement, I guess, and say that that's what we're currently dealing with. But don't let anybody believe that this is something that we're promulgating upon the town right now.
Absolutely.
Because it's not.
That's a good point.
Thank you.
Barbara?
And also.
Sorry, Bill.
You know, to Tom's point, you know what? Maybe if we could have a draft of your specifications marked up.
Is your mic on?
Oh, no.
Maybe we could have a draft of your specifications that you want to add to the agreement, so that we can review those as well, all in one place. And, you know, tell us what, this is the place to put it. Personally, I would like to see a separate page for service-level agreements on what the customer can expect, as well as what you were saying earlier about, you know, the HD tier as well. So I think that would make it a lot easier, and be able to present that to the public, because then they'll get it all in one package.
Sure.
You know, they'll get, here's the agreement Comcast gives us, here's what we think needs to be in it, in order to protect the consumer.
Sure.
Bill Boyd. I didn't want to forget you again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just dovetailing off of Council Koenig, everything that we get from staff says memo on it. Okay, I think to avoid any confusion, if you put memo to Nick from, you know, from, to Nick or to Eileen, the Town Council, can make things better in the long run. Because I agree with Tom, it was confusing. I agree with you that programming is à la carte. And I had broached this subject a couple of years ago at one of our retreats about the town actually providing internet service to the community of Merrimack. There are communities right now, Hollis, Hollis comes to mind right now. I know that there is a cooperative over in Cheshire County that is providing, I don't want to call it broadband, but they're providing, they're providing internet services to Swansea Keene, Unity, and one other, one other community, it might be Goshen, might be Goshen for all I know, that has been in, in effect now for the last couple of years. As a matter of fact, they, I think, the co- the cooperative over in Cheshire County got funding from, from the, from, I think it's the Southwest Regional Planning Commission, I think that's, was the genesis behind it. I also know that there's one up in Merrimack, I want to say it's Merrimack County, it's like, it's like Boscombe and Salisbury on, on a very small tier. Because I, I, I think the crux of the issue is, is, is internet, because, you know, I can pull up my smartphone, I can, like you said, pull up an app, I can watch anything from anywhere as long as I have internet access. And I think that is something that we ought to consider as a community, whether we do it as, as a public service to the community, whether we put out, as Chairman Rothaus said about an RFP, which I, I do support, whether we do something like that. I think the crux is actually being able to provide people in Merrimack access to the internet. And I think if you're able to provide access to the internet, I think, because I'm a firm believer in, in free market and competition, and I think you actually get it, I think now you give people more choice, because if they have better access to the internet at a more affordable price, it now allows them to say, I can afford Netflix for $9.95 a month, or I can afford Hulu for $5.99 a month, or, or what have you. I don't, you know, I can just pull up the old black and white, you know, tune to, tune to 9.10, and I can watch WMUR and get my, you know, get my six o'clock dose of, of the nightly news on, on MUR, because that ability is there. The larger concern that I have as it relates to the internet is the whole issue regarding net neutrality. And there's been a lot, a lot of discussion nationally about are internet providers now going to franchise specific sites and including that as a part of their package? So now Comcast has, has an issue with Netflix. I can go on to my, my remote control, go Netflix, boom, automatically brings me to the, to the, to the Netflix app right on my TV set. But they don't have anything, they don't have anything with Amazon. But let's suppose I want to use Amazon on, on my Comcast internet. They may say, well, in order for you to use Amazon, we're gonna charge you X number of dollars a month for you to, to gain access to Amazon. So now, absent, absent net neutrality, okay, it's now opening up the, these, these providers to be able to charge for people to access specific sites. And I'm wondering, and if I'm jumping, and I'm looking to you, because you and Justin are more intimately knowledgeable about this, so if I'm jumping the horse, you gotta tell me. But I'm just wondering if there's any type of language that we can incorporate into our franchise agreement that allows people in the community to have, and I hate to use the word free, but let me rephrase it, to have unfettered access to, to the internet. In other words, Comcast is not going to whack them 99 cents every time that they go to Peapod to order their groceries. They're not gonna whack them 99 cents for them to access their Gmail account or their Yahoo account. Do we have that ability to add that?
I'm glad you brought up net neutrality. I agree with everything that you just said. I do think that with net neutrality being killed, that is, what you just described is, I feel is going to happen, where the internet service provider can then choose a premium for you to be able to access Netflix or any sort of streaming content, or they'll throttle your speeds. I do agree with you. This franchise agreement is only relative to the cable TV services, which, where Finley had asked, why does it have to be 10 years? I'd actually say it may be wise to have a 10-year cable TV franchise agreement now to protect consumers here in Merrimack from that very possibility in the future. Because now we can look at it from a equal but opposite perspective, where the internet portion isn't very regulated. In fact, they're changing the regulations for internet where, by killing net neutrality. The cable TV portion, this is something that you do regulate. So I think it'd be smart to have a, a 10-year franchise renewal, because it has to do with cable TV. And everything that you just brought up about internet is, is right on, I agree with you 110%, but unfortunately, it's, it's not covered under the cable TV franchise agreement.
So just to, you know, going back to my, my pipe dream of the town of Merrimack providing internet, and it is kind of a pipe dream, because we would have to pay somebody to line the entire streets of, of Merrimack with, with cable. And that's probably, correct me if I'm wrong, if we were to look at, at a Cox Communications or a Time Warner or, or Verizon to come in to provide, to provide those specific services, they would have to put in their own, they'd have to put in their own cable. And, you know, a lot of that is, that, that's a start, that's a startup cost. And it's been, I think, you make a good point, we're a community of 8,000, we're not a, of 8,000 households, we're not a community of 80,000 households, where there's, there's a little bit, there's a little bit more market share to go after. With 8,000 is very limited market share. It might not be cost-effective for any one of these cable companies to come to Merrimack, because they're gonna expend, you know, X amount of capital at a delta X, and they may not be able to, and I'm not saying that they would be looking to recoup it right away, but, you know, the, it is a much more longer-term proposition of recouping that particular capital if they don't feel that they can acquire the appropriate market share to compete against, to compete against Comcast. So, infrastructure is critical, and infrastructure comes at a cost. And it's just a question of who's gonna pay for that particular cost, whether my pipe dream, you know, town of Merrimack providing internet to everybody in the community, or, or some, or somebody else. But.
Look at that. I just.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would move, what are we next scheduled to meet?
Thirteenth.
Is it 13th?
Thirteen.
September 13th. I would move that the Town Council ask Media Services Coordinator Nicola Valian and staff to come back with an amended version of this particular draft that has been presented to us, that in our packets, we have provided the current copy, because it was, it's very difficult for me to look at what we're currently operating at and look, and be able to look at the changes that we've talked about tonight. And I think it would behoove all of us to have, I'm not trying to inundate people with paper, but I just think it would behoove people to have copies of that. And then to revisit this issue on the 13th of September, to have a more substantive conversation about this, so that when we do move forward, and as Nick said, and that would be September 27th, when we do move to a public hearing, people will have had the opportunity to listen to us, talk about this twice, know that there's a copy of the current contract, what we're looking to put in this new franchise agreement. And that way, people that do come to talk on the 27th are prepared with the information to know of what exists in the community and what we're hoping to accomplish in, in the new agreement. So that would be my motion.
Motion. Is there a second?
Can you restate the motion, please?
Restate the motion?
Yeah.
Happy to.
In 20 words or less?
Oh, come on, Council Koenig, you're killing me.
We need to be able to print it on the paper. What do you want us to vote on?
I want you to vote that on, that we will reconvene on September 13th, that Media Services will provide a copy of the current contract and the revised contract for our review, and that both documents be included in our packet.
Okay. But I don't want to know his changes, too.
Well, again, you're gonna have a copy of the current contract, and I'm asking him to come up with the new contract and have it, have it wordsmithed in such a way that's gonna show any language changes, any additions, any deletions that he feels that are appropriate. Counterproposal. Thank you, Councilor.
Nicholas, what do you think of that decision, that suggestion? Are you prepared to do something like that by the 13th, or are we asking you to do something that's a little above and beyond?
The only advantage, disadvantage is, we will have not had an opportunity to hear from the public.
Which is why the, he's suggesting that the public meeting be the end of September.
Right, so we should wait till after the public hearing to be able to summarize everything for his proposal.
The current, the current franchise agreement is, is readily available on the town's website now. I think it was, I think it wasn't included in the packet, was to save paper. But the, the current franchise agreement is available to view now. I personally feel that you have, you have my notes, you have the draft agreement, and you have access to the current franchise agreement. I think if we were to have a public hearing, we would just give an opportunity for the public to have a place to talk about, you know, what they would like to see in the, in the franchise. And, and at any given time between now and the public hearing, the council could submit and put it as well.
I just, I, I think at some point, what you're, probably because of my age and your, my daughter's age.
It's a generation gap, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a generation gap. But you might, it, it might be a good idea, given the age of the population in New Hampshire in general, that we do a 101 cable internet 101 kind of thing, almost like a flow chart on how these, how the different pieces and parts work. Because what, I think what you're saying, without pictures or diagrams or any of that kind of thing, is difficult for someone like myself to follow. I don't have Hulu or any of those kinds of things, and I'm, maybe there are other people that don't either. So, so I, I think to start with that, so that people can understand what it is exactly that we're, we're talking about.
So if you're looking, if you're asking if I'm comfortable with making a PowerPoint presentation on the 13th, two weeks in advance of a public hearing on the 27th, I'm fine to do that. I'm also, I'm also comfortable with, with doing, giving a presentation on the 27th during the public hearing as well.
That would, that would be good. Paul?
I think if the council, who's the council, Eileen and I can work with Nicholas to bring something back on the 13th. I don't think there needs to be a motion. I think we hear, we heard very well, loud and clear from the council, what you're looking for. Let us work with Nicholas and bring something forward at that time, if that's okay with the council.
Can I just make one additional comment? You, you very carefully pointed out that this was a cable television franchise renewal. And a couple of times, you've been clear to say TV. But we, we frequently use the word cable. And cable is the same way that internet is getting into my house. And cable is, you know, so cable is, is not the discussion here, it's the television access that's a franchise renewable. And I think we need to make it exceedingly clear that we're talking about TV access across the cable, and not internet access across the cable. Because many of us are getting our internet access across the cable. Some people are using Dish, some people are using other ways. But they're two distinct services. And as you pointed out several times, we can't franchise the internet service, because it's not regulated in the way that allows us to do the television service. And so we just need to be really careful, I think, going forward in any discussions that we're talking about the television franchise service, because the cable's coming to my house regardless right now.
Right.
Thanks.
All right. Good with that, Bill? Does that work?
Sure.
Who's, who's Barbara, and then?
You know, we had the gentleman who, you know, was telling us that there are some issues with, I'm not sure, because there were no specifics, but apparently there are a lot of our residents who are trouble, having trouble with Comcast. So I think when we do present it to the public, we need to realize that some of that may come through. And, and so maybe we need to think about how those will get resolved, or set up a process in the future, so that, like we talked about before, complaints come in somehow to, you know, into Town Hall, and then they get sent back out again. Because, you know, maybe that kind of muscle from Town Hall will help get some things resolved faster. I don't know. But I think we should be prepared for that.
Peter?
And again, Nick, I'd like to also everything that you've said so far. But I'd like to see Comcast there. And, and to go to Barbara's point, if it's gonna be a public hearing, maybe they show up on the 27th, and, and they can also hear, if there's a number of folks here that have some gripes, they can hear that then, and maybe start talking about it. So it'd be great if Comcast could be here for that, so.
Sure. On the 27th or the 13th?
27.
27.
Okay.
All right.
Tom? So Nicholas, because the two services are commingled on the cable, I, I don't know if people are having trouble with their internet access and service from Comcast, or whether they're having trouble with their TV service from Comcast. My understanding is this franchise agreement we have only deals with the TV portion, and we really don't have any hook to grab Comcast with as far as the internet service is concerned. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So if the problems that people are having is with Comcast and the internet service, there's nothing we can do to help them?
You're absolutely correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm telling you, the problem with Comcast is the crazy cost. That's the problem. That's people's beef. I'm, I'm really pretty confident. Well, fair, fair enough.
We need examples.
Yep. Yep.
We don't want to report some of the criteria.
No.
We need examples.
All right.
I mean, I just, I just want to point out, I don't work for Comcast. I am a employee of the town of Merrimack. And, and, and when I say that this has to do with, with cable and not internet, you know, that's, I'm not, television-
That's right.
It has to do with television, their television services, and not the internet. I'm not trying to find a way out of a problem, or make excuses for Comcast. I have, I am a Comcast consumer in Manchester. I have my own issues with them. And I, I don't subscribe to cable. I'm one of these, I guess, generation gap who just has internet and just streams his content now.
Well, how do you get your internet?
Comcast.
From Comcast.
On a cable?
On a cable.
Okay. You said you don't subscribe to cable.
I don't-
The whole point is-
Television service.
We keep talking about, don't describe-
All right. I'm going to call the question.
We're on the same page.
It's going to call the question.
Where, who you are.
You're going to stop. You're going to stop.
All right. Thank you, Nick. And we'll see, well, we'll, we'll see you next meeting, so. All right. Thanks, Justin.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, June 20th, 2018 facilitation report minutes, if you will, as well as June 19, July 19th. Is there a motion? Seeing none?
I would like to, I guess the word's table. I've really not had time to really be, review the facilitation report well, so could I request that it be, either I'll just-
Put it up.
Yeah.
Wait.
Oh, I'll wait till the next, I don't know what the group feels.
We table it, yep.
Table it.
Do you want to-
I mean, if everyone else is prepared, that's fine, I'll just-
Do you want to, do you want to do the July 19th, or do you want to table both pieces?
I'm okay with July 19th.
Yeah.
I did read it. Yes, I'd like to move to approve the meeting on July 19th, as written.
Motion by Nancy.
Second.
Seconded by Council Boyd. Any changes, or anything? All questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, abstain, 7-0-0. Do you want to move to table the facilitation report?
That's okay.
Yep.
Some-
Second.
Second.
Sorry. You seconded, I'm seconded. All, all those in favor with tabling, the June 9, June 20th, 2018 facilitation reports, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, 7-0-0. Comments from the press? Comments from the public?
As I'm trying to stay awake. Lorraine Allen, 16 French Court. I was reading the minutes from the last meeting, which I hadn't had a chance to online yet. And I just have two comments, just for FYI. One is the discussion about the property on 11 Depot Street. I'm not, maybe some of you are more familiar with the history of that property, with the, whether it was a pumping station, whether it was a spring, that the resident came forward and said that they would like to. Well, I had an opportunity last year to talk with Drew, I think, in the wastewater division of DES, about that particular property, because it came to my attention that the water has been running for quite some time. And someone contacted me, and asked me if that water had been tested, because we have issues with Wells 4 and 5, and Front Street, and that whole area with private wells. So, the issue that they were concerned about is their dog, I guess, on a regular basis, like some of the water ran through and on their property, which was behind Depot Street, whatever street is behind there. So I said, I'll call and ask, you know, one of my new friends at DES, and they were going to look at maps, and they were going to find out, was it MVD-owned, was it a capped well that hadn't been done properly? They, last I heard, they weren't sure what it was exactly. So, they assured me they were going to look it up, call the town, maybe the MVD. First, they were going to find out the owner, number one. Then they were going to go out there, and they were going to do some testing. So I took them at their word, and I didn't have a reason to follow up. I let the homeowner on the other end know that that's what they told me, because she, for whatever reason, was reluctant to call them. And now that I'm reading this, it's fine. But I'm just wondering, or, you know, maybe you should find out, did that water ever get tested? And the reason I'm bringing that up is for a specific reason. This year in legislative session, there was a 1761, or 91, or some bill that was passed. And what it does is it requires property owners, municipalities, and anyone to not only disclose anything about chemical issues with property, but also to be aware of them, and to say, what we didn't know is, for New Hampshire, it kind of stunned me, it's no longer an excuse. I don't know how that's going to be implemented, honestly. So, but just for your information, there is a new law in the state, and it says that you're supposed to know. So it would just be good to check with DES and say, was that water tested for PFAS? Because I was under the impression last fall that they were going to do that. So that's just one FYI to follow up on. And the other one is on the same topic of chemicals. In town, as we've gone through this PFAS investigation, you know, we've become aware of older sites that they've gone back, and they've tested for PFAS, but there was already stuff there, and you know where those sites are. So when I read about this issue about the YMCA property, and Neighbor Works coming forward to put something on it, I don't know how we're going to address this as a town, but I just want to remind you that this YMCA property is one of the properties that DES had requested. They had sent a letter to last fall stating that there's vaporous intrusion from TCE. There's no doubt that TCA is a hazardous chemical, it's bad. And this property, they had requested testing. Also, New England Pole property, Combat Corps is all over there also. Now, I'm assuming that for businesses in industry, if the state says, hey, we can't make you, but we'd like to come and test your property, chances are they're going to say, stay away, don't, don't, I don't want the trouble, and I get that. But this YMCA property, I don't know if it was ever looked at, or if they responded, but it is on the list for TCA vaporous intrusion. And, I'm just, as a planning board member, you know, I know it's been a lot of issues over, well, it's not our problem, it's a DES issue, and, but do we, in good faith, disclose this also? Does that come under that new law? I don't even know. So I just wanted to just bring up those two things.
The, where they're building this housing development is actually closer to Thornton's Cemetery, which is on the other side of the YMCA property. The property that DS wants to be tested is next to the old EPA site, which is off a right av, which is by New England Pole, which is by the old Combat. This property is on the other side of Horseshoe Pond, down towards Thornton's Cemetery.
So the YMCA property is extensive, is what you're saying, goes around Horseshoe Pond, and, or they have multiple properties?
Multiple properties.
Yeah.
It's off a right av. It's that field-
Yeah, the right av is the area of concern.
That's not the property that Neighbor Works is going to.
Okay, another one. All right. Because vaporous intrusion at TCEs and other areas, interestingly enough, how I know about this, is they had this issue, very strange, and I'm wondering about this, at Husick Falls in the Single Bay area. Part of their superfund designation is because of TCE VOCs, and something called DCE, which is similar to TCE. So, those are industrial chemicals that have been found and implicated, they have the same manufacturing, the same products, for many, many years. So, I kind of have been looking at that just out of curiosity, because that's what I do sometimes. But, this area with the intrusion, my understanding of it, from what I've heard from New York, is that it covers a vast area. It doesn't just neatly go maybe right over the property line. So I just wanted people to know that, just so, it's something new for all of us, but we just have to be conscious, I think, when we're looking at planning, and, and especially with this new law, that's stating about disclosure and things like this, that was just signed in this session. So I just, just wanted to bring that up, because that's not a law that we would even be aware of. I would, I'm only aware of it just because of some of the legislative updates that, that I get. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments from the public? Seeing none. Comments from the council? All right. Who would like to make a-
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Man. Motion by Council Thornton, seconded by Council Boyd.